I just wanted to make sure your click sheet was.
I'm trying to get it to work. There we go.
Okay, okay. Now, Dr. Chris, he's gonna come over here to try to set up the training room for, for Zan.
Chris is coming. You might want to tell them that we're in the process of getting the training room set up. There'll be more seating and monitors.
Just across the hall?
Yeah. And then if they want to speak, then you can slip in. Chris is on his way.
Most of these here for backwater.
Or like, you want to try to clear the room first? You might ask. See which one everybody's here for and then take a straw pole and try to clear the room quicker.
That's not a bad idea.
Here for backwater, it's gonna do it pretty quick.
My dad's gonna do that in front of us. We don't have a seating problem.
The first three are really.
That's a good idea.
The first three are quick and then we hit backwater.
And then we hit water. All right. But. I'll tell them about that.
It's probably item four. Six o'clock, Dave. It's a good idea, take a straw pole. And move it to first. Which one? I think it's probably number four, don't you? Um.
Four or five.
Yeah, they could've set up. They could've set up.
If they're gonna put that crane in here and wear them down some. I mean, we're gonna get to it quick.
Okay.
We'll get to it quick. First three are.
All right, let's do it.
First three are cut and drag.
Let's do it, let's do it.
It's after six, I don't know if y'all ready to rock or if you're waiting on some.
He's ready.
Recording, but Chris said that he was on his way to have this talk.
He is. Um, so the only thing that's not up in there is video, live video camera. Want to teleport as, um, video business screen that follows all of our audio. Uh, available. You ready?
I call this meeting to order. EFAM County Planning Board Meeting of May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Now in session, I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. Um, we're going to begin this meeting with a word of prayer. We're going to follow the prayer with the pledge of allegiance and we'd like to ask that everyone would stand if you're, if you're able with us for both of these.
Wish grace, Father, we just praise you for this time. We can come out and discuss these important issues of EFAM. We just ask that your will would be done, Lord. We just ask that you would be with our country, our leaders, our president and our troops. Keep us safe, Lord, and just give us all safe travel home tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. Um, there is another room over across the hall that has the same video and audio, um, as available in this room. The other rooms, yeah. You can hear and see the screen over there. If anyone wishes to go over there until the item is called. Um, Ms. Teresa, is there anything we need to add or delete from this agenda?
No.
Call for a motion to approve this agenda.
I make a motion for approval.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Thompson, all those in favor of approval?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried by all. Minutes from April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Any creation additions?
No.
Call for a motion to approve these minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the April eighteenth, twenty twenty-two minutes.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor of approval?
Aye.
Motion carried by all. All items presented tonight will be presented again at the Board of Commissioners meeting. That meeting is also a public hearing. Items that are approved as well as denied will move forward to the commissioners. Like to ask that when the item of your interest is called, that you would come forward to the podium, that you would state your name and sign your name for the record, please. Item number one is a public hearing for Stanley Redding III. Is agent for Paula M. Redding, requests to rezon two point nine acres from AR one to AR two for allow for the separation of two homesites located on Redding Drive. This is the first district. Is there a representative here tonight for the Reddings or, or for the Reddings? Ms. Teresa?
Yes, we have an application to rezone these two acres as the owners wish to subdivide the parcel, split it in two to create a second home site. That requires, uh, we can't create a new parcel, um, under five acres in the AR one zoning district. So the entire parcel has to be rezoned to AR two, which bring it into compliance, um, with these smaller lot sizes. So we are recommending approval of the request to rezone this parcel to AR two.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions, comments from the board at this time? Is there anyone who wishes to speak against this request? I call for a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Smith, all those in favor of approval?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried by all. Item two is a public hearing for Lonnie and Candace Spot, requests a variance to allow for an RV camper to be used as a temporary dwelling during the construction of a residence located at three hundred Early Street Extensions on AR one. This is the fourth district. Is there a representative for the Bots? Anyone who wishes to speak, Ms. Teresa?
Yes, so the, uh, Bots are in the process of building a house on this parcel and they have asked for a variance from our restriction on living in an RV in the, in an R zoning district, or AR zoning district. Uh, they are currently living there, um, they have a building permit and as you see from the photo today, their, their dome structure is in the process of being inflated and then it will be, uh, the, the outer shell will be applied to that and the structure will be constructed from there. So we do have a building permit, we are in actively inspecting the site and staff are recommending approval of this variance from the restriction on living in camper while the house is being built.
Uh, twelve months be fine, you think?
Twelve months, yep.
Twelve months. Is there anyone who wishes to speak against this request? All right, I call for a motion.
Make a motion to approve, uh, twelve, twelve months?
Motion for approval, any discussion? Call for a second.
I'll second.
Second. Mr. Higgins, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried by all. Item three is a public hearing for Eric and Kristen Reamy, requests to rezon ten point seven five acres, ten point seven five acres from AR one to AR two to allow for the separation of a home site located at one thirty-six Bunyan Castle Road. This is the fifth district. Is there a representative for the Reamys?
I'm Kristen Reamy.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Hi.
Can you just tell us a little bit about your request, home site?
We actually just got the CO on our home today that we finished. Um, we're looking for our daughter, son-in-law and granddaughter who will be moving to Georgia from New Jersey to build on the property.
Questions, comments from the board at this time? Ms. Teresa, do you have any comments?
Uh, no, this is the proposed plat, so the ten point seven five acres is currently AR one and the Reamys are asking to rezone the entire acreage.
Might as well give it to them now, it's gonna be theirs one day anyway.
Right, so they're rezoning the entire acreage although they're just splitting off one acre at this time.
One acre will be ours. The rest will, yeah.
They're splitting off nine point seven five acres at this time, but the entire acreage is being rezoned, so you do understand the entire acreage?
I do.
Right, which means that if you further subdivide it, you would not need to rezone, so you're.
Correct.
Getting it all done now. Staff are recommending approval.
All right, thank you. Anything further? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak, either in favor or against this request? Ms. Reamy, we may have a question for you in a moment if we let this lady right here speak.
I couldn't hear clearly the last part of that. I own the property that borders the property there.
Yes, come on up to the microphone, please.
Sign in.
Yes, ma'am. So you own the adjacent property?
I do. And, uh, that's one of the concerns in the rezoning. I see that they have rezoned in their house that she's mentioned as being constructed and that they want to rezone the rest, but in my opinion, if they want to put one more house on there and rezone, that there's no reason why the second piece of property has to be rezoned to AR two, that it could stay AR one because it's big enough to put a house on. And so if they rezone this plot that they put the original house on to AR two, that's fine. The rest of the property is being looked at as a mini subdivision to be developed. It's on wetlands, I don't know if they call it wetlands anymore, it's a flood plain. My property is right beside it, I've lived there twenty years and it floods and it goes into two foot of water, you can't walk around down there, it's like a swamp, land moves, shuffles. And I don't see any reason why they need to zone or build on this other piece of property. Uh, I, my husband, he's gone, passed away, but when he was here, Mr. Sarkadius had asked if we would like to buy the property and it bordered ours and we thought, well, let's look at it. My husband came up and researched and at that time it was not possible to build on it. It was wetlands, no septic, no water and, um, they, that you would not get permission to build house on there. So of course, whenever Mr. Reamy started building the house, I was concerned because Red, a friend of my husband, had a trailer on that property and he'd asked, been asked by the county to move his trailer, that the septic tank that had been put in for that trailer was not supposedly that, so he did, he moved his trailer out and for years, nothing's been done on the property. So main concern is that that property should not be read, I don't think the second piece of panel, uh, it's called parcel one, needs to be rezoned to AR two. It could be, put one house on there as it is and the other house could be on the property it's on. And then there's not gonna be a concern of this being developed into smaller parcels of land on a swamp that drains into Dashers Creek. I mean, I know there are ways you can build mounds and et cetera and et cetera, but all of this drainage is gonna come on my property and into Dashers Creek. So I have objection to the whole ten acres being zoned AR two.
So let me get you an answer, Ms. Teresa, can you explain why it has to be, needs to be rezoned?
Uh, well, so the, the one acre does need to be rezoned for sure. Uh, the remainder doesn't have to, but if you do, if you look at the map, if you wanted to look back, the parcel across the stru, the road is already AR two, this is not incompatible with the area. There's a, you know, the lightest green there is AR one, which is our large lot ag residential zoning, but that medium green, um, is AR two, so, so other neighbors have already subdivided land and, and left large tracks as AR two, so it's not incompatible at all. As to whether the land would be buildable, the health department has already signed off on this, this survey and that is of course just for the one acre that's being split off. If, if there were any, um, effort to further subdivide, it would require health department review for, um, at least one buildable acre in order to support well and septic. So that is all in the future. If, if this were to be subdivided, it really would come down to whether the health department could, could certify one buildable acre for any proposed development. So it's not for us to say that it can't be rezoned, there, there's no reason not to, it's not going to hurt the area at all, it's compatible with surrounding zoning either as AR one or AR two. And as far as wetlands, I, I mean, we don't necessarily look at that in a rezoning, sometimes it just works better for people to be able to be in one district over another. So in this case, there, there's, we're not looking at buildability, that's a health department, uh, decision or, or analysis later if the applicant were to come in and, and seek additional well and septic sites on that acreage.
So you're saying if he would decide later that, as he told me, he was gonna build four more houses down through there at some time, that he would have to have this looked at again?
Ma'am, ma'am, can I get you to speak in that microphone, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Uh, so in the future, if, uh, he would want to build on these properties and on the zone, on the, this, I don't know if you have one of those, but it was, a surveyor came in and resurveyed this mainly because I had, uh, cautioned him against clearing property. I have fences for my horse, but we didn't put them on a property line and so there's like twenty, thirty feet of swamp that you couldn't put a fence post in because that's the way the property is, it's just a swamp. And, uh, so that property looked like it could have been his. So I asked him shortly after they moved in to not to clear the land of the property, take the trees and shrubbery off because I wanted that as a barrier. And, um, so, uh, that's part of my concern is that I don't want the property being cleared down through there to put houses in at an AR two level.
All right, thank you. Ma'am, could, could I get you to state your name?
Arlie Spiker.
Arlie Spiker, thank you.
Okay, so, let me just put my phone number here.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Yes, sir.
Hey, I'm Jeffrey Waldauer, I'm eight oh one Nice Road. I built the house for Mr. Eric and Ms. Kristen and they, uh, just to help with the process, they asked that I help them get this subdivided so they could give the other parts to their daughter and that's the reason why I own the plat is because of the wetlands is the reason why they're only gonna take the acre and now they're gonna give the rest to their daughter because that'll allow her to have a full acre as well. And like you said, the, uh, Ms. Teresa said, the, the perk test has been done for both tracks, um, both are passed, it's already been signed off by the health department. Also, like Ms. Teresa said, I think at least two, if not three of the lots, parcels across the road are already zoned AR two, so it's not incompatible for what we're asking for. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Waldauer.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Questions, comments from the board? There are none, I'll call from, you got a question?
Without the zoning change, it would be just the one lot, there would be no further subdivision allowed with the.
Without the zoning change, we can't, I can't, staff can't sign the survey.
The remainder of the parcel, I guess is what I'm saying.
Oh.
Stand the overall, you had to rezonate to do that.
With the remainder, so what's the, the larger part that's noted as parcel one, uh, the nine points, no, it's ten point six acres? Oh, I'm sorry, nine point six acres. Um, that, that doesn't have to be rezoned, the, the, you know, we're not requesting it, it's not unusual for an applicant to think ahead and that they may want to split off another home site in the future and, you know, we don't, we're not gonna stand in the way of that as, you know, as you see in the zoning, other, other property owners in the area have already done that, there are smaller parcels along here. So it's really thinking ahead, otherwise they may end up being back here in a year or two if they did want to split off another couple of acres. But at that time, it, it, you know, the health department does have to review each plat, um, so at this point, obviously, Director of Environmental Health has a, has, has the perk test to show that, that these two parcels are good, have buildable, have at least buildable acre each. Um, and if parcel one were to be subdivided in the future, you know, we would, that would come through us and, you know, we would look at that and in AR two zoning, we, we would be able to sign off on, on a split of, of anything from one acre or more. So there's really no issue from us.
All right, thank you. Anything further?
No, Mr. Chairman, I make approval for, um, a motion for approval.
Sorry, sorry.
Did I have clarification on what was decided?
Um, it hasn't been decided yet.
Okay.
We're about to get it though. Would you wish to make a motion?
Yes, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve, stack for, with all staff recommendations.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
A second.
Second. All those in favor of approval?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried by all. The amendment was approved as it was requested. Um, it now goes to the County Commissioners meeting. This board is a, a, just a recommendation to the board, the county commissioners will make the final say. Thank you. Item four is a public hearing for WT Wadston, is agent for Millen Timber Company, requests to rezon forty-six point six two of fifty-two point eight acres from AR one to I one to allow for a surface mine located at ten eighty Midland Road, this is the first district. Good evening, sir.
My name is WT Wadston and I gotta rezone this property to one I, they call it a surface mine, but I wanna build a, a ten acre pond. So in order to do that, I gotta haul the dirt out. The site is one point three miles from Georgia Highway seventeen.
All right, sir. Questions, comments from the board at this time?
I likely may, but I'd like to hear.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, Ms. Teresa, do you have anything at this time?
Yes, staff have looked at this and, um, have the following to say about it. Uh, so surface mine, this, the rezoning is because our ordinance requires anything that requires a state mining permit to be rezoned to industrial, so that's, that's why Mr. Wadston's here for, uh, rezoning to indus, I one. And if approved, the, uh, the zoning, the rezoning would limit any use to, to surface mine only, so it wouldn't open it up to industrial use of, of other sorts. So that, that's the first thing out of the way. The state requirements don't require zoning to industrial, but they do have other requirements. The state requires that, uh, the applicant, as part of their, their state mining permit application, submit a jurisdictional determination, uh, you know, regarding the wetlands on the site, they have to submit a zoning compliance letter, um, so, so that, you know, once the rezoning were approved, if it were approved, we would be probably asked for a, a zoning verification letter to confirm that, that surface mining is permitted on the site. So that, that's all known and predictable. So this area is zoned, I'm gonna go to, to the very end and just look at the zoning. This is a, a residential, agricultural residential area. This proposed surface mine is on the upper left, there's a little red star, that's the site we're talking about. There are only two red, um, areas towards the bottom right and those are the existing surface mines in that area on Midland Road, so there are surface mines on Midland Road a little further south. The purple relates to subdivisions, the dark blue, the medium blue is, uh, R one subdivisions, mostly this is a very low density ag residential environment. Um, it is also not a designated truck route, that designated truck route ordinance was adopted after the, one of these mines was approved, but was, was the, the, the mine on the west side of Midland was approved afterwards. So other mi, you know, mines have been approved both before and after the designated truck route ordinance was approved. Uh, the main concern we have is actually the wetlands coverage on this site. There is extensive wetlands coverage and the future land use map shows it as agricultural, so we've had some concerns in the past with surface mines in ag residential areas and this one, given that it's close to, uh, residential subdivisions and relatively far away from ex, from both this designated truck route, be it, you know, Highway seventeen in this case, um, and other mines, gave us some concern that, that this might not be a good location for a mine. The extensive wetlands coverage, also, we don't know the extent of the wetlands, we did not receive a, um, a delineation of the, the site or even, um, whether it be from the Corps of Engineers or even a wetland specialist. The, the, the site plan submitted, and I'm sorry, I don't have it in the, the, in the PowerPoint, it, it's in their packet though, the, the site plan does show a wetlands coverage, but we're not sure of the source of that wetlands, um, coverage, so at this time, we're, we're not seeing this as, as, as a verified wetlands coverage that's, that's shown on the site plan. And I can, if you want me, I can go and get the, our, our GIS, I can pull it up real quick if, if you wanted me to, but you see the site plan in your packet showing the proposed, what's, 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 what the applicant.
I think the site plan is sufficient.
That's good, all right, so the concerns we have though are that the wetlands are unclear, the extent of the wetlands is unclear and if this were rezoned and we're found to have wetlands that extent, too extensive to actually make it work as a surface mine, that we would have industrial land hanging on Midland Road surrounding, surrounded by residential with, with no prospect of a surface mine. And, and, and we get a lot of interest from, from applicants, from, um, realtors for currently industrial zoned land, we're concerned that continuing to rezone land for surface mines that may or may not become a surface mine would just lead to more speculation in that land. So we, we have some reservations about whether this could be, uh, could go ahead and get a state mining permit. And what we're hoping, what we'd like to see is, is the wetlands, um, delineation or wetlands survey, if Mr. Wadston has that, that was done to support the site plan so that we could do a little bit more study of this site.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
I've already had a wetlands determination made on the site. I didn't present it, I wasn't asked, did I have it, but I have it, I have a map with all that on it. That's the reason that it's a ten acre pond instead of a four, on a forty-two acre site, we understand it's gotta be a hundred and fifty foot setback from the wetlands. We can't disturb anything within a hundred and fifty feet on either side or the back of the property. And as far as the truck route, it's a thousand feet down Midland, before we get on our Marlowe, it's one point three miles to Georgia seventeen. And when I get through, we dig into pond, I don't wanna keep it industrial, I wanna zone it back AR five, we'll put a home site on it.
All right, sir. All right, thank you, Mr. Wadston, we may have some questions for you in a moment.
I've just got a question, do they have an estimated timeline for the removal of the dirt in the ten acres?
I don't. Maybe a year, maybe two years, just according to the market, according to whether we crash, uh, according to how much home building goes on our hands. As far as getting the state permit, my engineers already assured me there's no problem getting the state permit. And I had the wetland delineation made, uh, had resource land out of Savannah come in and they already done a wetland determination and it's all been flagged and everything. Matter of fact, I was before this board a year and a half ago and got approved and then I pulled it because somebody came in and wanted to do some work on the front and that didn't work out. So I'm going back now to do the, the pond by there.
Okay.
I'm a little confused, so in your opening statement, you said, I wanna build a ten acre pond. So are you gonna build the ten acre pond on the forty-six point six acre?
Yes.
On the forty-two acres in the back, right.
Okay.
There's a narrow piece up front, there's a wetland going through. There's a narrow piece up front, there's a wetland going through the middle of the track, and there's a narrow piece up front where the road will come out. Then as it opens up in the back, in that area back there, and you have to get a hundred and fifty feet off of all the wetlands. So that narrows you down approximately ten acres.
Ten acres is basically all the usable land you can dig, when maintained and to buffer and everything else.
If you get bigger than you're going to be over there too close to the wetlands.
Right.
Ten acres is as big as you can get. And then there's forty-two acres, somebody will have a nice home site one day with a pond on it.
Yep.
Have you had any geotechnical studies to understand the dirt, like the dirt is quality?
I have, I did, I had the dirt tested, yes. We did, when I had bored four wells and had the dirt and analyzed. Like I said, I did all that work a couple of years ago before this COVID thing hit, had it before the board when we was in the church down there. And they approved it at that time, but I pulled it because it was a rezoning issue with my engineer.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wasden. We may have some questions for you in a moment. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen. My name is Lawrence Eady. I'm at one forty-two Palmetto Road. I live in the vicinity of the proposed rezoning parcel.
Sir, did you say Lawrence Eady?
Lawrence Eady, yes, sir. E-A-D-D-Y. I did author a, a letter opposing this rezoning that I'd asked to be made a part of the, of the package. It's dated May sixth. That letter includes a number of reasons that I and a number of my neighbors do oppose this rezoning. I will try to cover them quickly for time's sake. I'll start with the obvious that digging and hauling operation for a, a borrow pit creates noise, dust, and heavy truck traffic. Those are activities, obviously, they're not conducive to residential use and would be, would pose a definite nuisance to the residents who live nearby. Obviously, the homeowners, when they purchased the property, in my case, nearly thirty years ago, a lot of folks more recently, were either in some form of residential zoning and they purchased the property understanding that that was the zoning. So this was, is an obvious change that would be a detriment after the fact. I do want to speak for just a moment on the issue of permitting through Georgia EPD. I am a former environmental manager, did the work for about fifteen years. I did speak to regulators at Georgia EPD about this permitting process. Usually for surface mines, and I've been in the county for nearly thirty years and I'm familiar with these rezoning applications. They come forward with exactly this sort of recommendation, that the rezoning is temporary. It will be, it may be a nuisance, but it will be a temporary nuisance. And when it's all done, the neighbors will have a, a nice landscape area with, with a pond and a home. The only problem with that is that Georgia EPD does not regulate the timeframe of the permit. So all you have is the assurance from the applicant, that it may be a year or two, but you have no means of legally limiting that timeframe, that I'm aware of. Not through the state, that I'm, that I'm confident after having discussed this with regulators. I'm not aware of a means within the county to limit it. Once it's rezoned, it's rezoned. And then when, when he is done, then presumably it would revert back to the prior zoning. But in the meantime, the neighbors are at the, are, are subject to the, the market conditions and the needs of the landowner and however long it takes him to complete it. So speaking for myself, I don't think we're prepared to concede that indefinite timeframe. The nature of the area at Midland Road has changed. There are many more residents now along that road than there were thirty years ago. So the surface mines that were there are sufficient in our view. We don't need another one. So that's one main concern is it's an indefinite timeframe. And the land use plan for Effingham County very clearly shows that this area is not intended for industrial use, even temporarily. So a temporary approval would be incompatible with the county's land use plan. And if you don't follow the land use plan, then why have it? So, and I am just curious to know, I know that I had some neighbors that indicated they were going to be here. I would like to see who of my neighbors are here that oppose this action, if you don't mind raising your hand. Okay, so you get an idea of where we're coming from. And I'm not speaking for my neighbors, but they may wish to speak for themselves also. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Eady. Ms. Teresa. Would it be any different if somebody was doing like a resident digging a one acre pond as opposed to this ten acres, as far as zoning or anything like that?
Yeah, any pond that's less than one acre would just be really a simple pond application, come before the planning board, you all would vote on it and that would be the end of it. If, if approved, then they would go on to, to dig their pond.
This has to go to the commissioners also?
Yeah, because it's one acre or more, in this case quite a bit more than one acre, it requires, our ordinance requires that it be rezoned, it requires a state mining permit and therefore it requires that it be rezoned to industrial.
I'm William Vandver. I own property about fifteen acres of wetland that joins this place, and I have a small pond there. And if he's allowed to do this, this will drain my wetlands and it will drain my pond. Because it's a small pond, but it's fine. And the wetlands that, that he's talking about drying up, it comes from a creek that comes through Marlowe, crossing Marlowe Road and comes in that way. And it has always been there. And, and so I, I definitely oppose this because it will have adverse effects on my property.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Darryl Mobley. I live at eleven eighty-five Midland Road, so I'm across the street from this proposed area. I'm a new resident to the area and certainly have some concerns about what type of traffic the dump trucks and that type of thing would have. So I stand to ask for this to be opposed because of that reason.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mobley.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against? Yes, sir.
I'm Bob Lane. I live at one one six Village Drive. My property backs up to Marlowe Road. So during this entire time, I'm going to have these dump trucks going back and forth. That's a thirty-five mile an hour road. I've lived there for almost ten years now. I've never seen anybody go down that road at thirty-five miles an hour. And now we're going to start adding a bunch of dump trucks to this. There's all kinds of wildlife that goes across that road. The neighbors across the road have a bunch of geese that are always getting out there. So there's going to be a lot of this going on. There's going to be trucks, I think, coming down there at a little more than thirty-five and then finding a bunch of geese in the road and trying to stop real quick. Without any assurances of at least how long this project is going to take, I stand to oppose.
All right, sir. Thank you, sir.
Afternoon. My name's Gary West. I live twelve three nine Midland Road, just down the road from him. Been there for twenty years. I built my house in oh-two. Property has gone way up in value, traffic gone way up, the speed limits dropped down, nobody pays the speed limit. I understand that. But anyway, it's going to be built catty corners across the high road from me. You know, I've been in, I've been in heavy equipment operation all my life. I know about the dust, I know about the noise, and I'm retired and I got to hear all this stuff. I like to sit on my back porch, drink my iced tea, cup of coffee in the morning, but I really don't want to hear all that. And I know it's going to lower the value of a house. And this is a house I built for my ever home. When they come get me, be feet first, I hope. And I hope I'm still there. But it's going to lower the value of a house, especially for those if front Midland Road, just like I do. And I understand people have got rights, but I got rights too. I've been there for twenty, well, twenty years. And I really don't want to see this happen. It's one thing to have a fish pond, but it's another thing to dig it out, make a borrow pit and sell it later on for lake side property. I've been there too. I've been involved in that, I know how it goes. But I hope y'all listen to us. For those of us that are retired, we cannot go anywhere else. I probably could, but I'll lose money. And I really don't want to do that, especially at my age right now. Appreciate y'all listening to me, I just want to voice my concern.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Does anyone have anything else to wish to add to this, these comments we've heard? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I would. I'm Judy Wolf. I live at one eighty-nine Midland Pines Road. And it will be directly behind where he wants to put that burrow pit. I moved in there in nineteen ninety-six with the assurance that, well, there were designated wetlands behind and that, that would never be developed or used for anything. We'd always have a nice buffer and now I'm seeing that go down the tubes. I also have a pond there and that is a concern of mine as well, that when that digging starts, I have heard, I don't know, I'm not an engineer, but I've heard that, that can affect the level of my pond by like four, four feet and take as long as two years to recover from that. I lost my husband a few years ago. It's my retirement home, my retreat. I live on my back porch, looking out at the beautiful sights and the trees and the cypress and everything that goes with it. And what he's proposing is right out my door. I too am wondering about the property value, just how that will affect. And the noise, as I said, it's a quiet peaceful place and I will say ditto, ditto, ditto to everybody that spoke before me. We don't want it. There's plenty other places in the county and we've already got one on Midland Road.
All right, thank you, Ms. Wolf.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gary Woodruff. I live at one fifty-five Midland Pines Road down about seventy-five yards from Judy. This burrow pit would go in about a hundred and fifty yards from my house. I'm also retired, I've been there twenty years. And six days a week, I do not want to listen to a burrow pit clank and groan. They built a pond behind me a few years ago and I, every day, we had the same noise. It's bad enough, we've got some neighbors in the neighborhood that suffer from the noise of the crossing of Midland and Courthouse. They put rumble strips in there that they're less than a hundred feet from people's back windows. So, you know, it makes it just about impossible to live there. There's some people that aren't enjoying their back porch anymore because of the rumble strips. But I think the burrow pit going six days a week or seven days a week would be a bit much for a neighborhood. I live on the end that was not shaded there. I think there's approximately ten residents in there. Out of the ten residents, seven of them are retired. I don't think this is quite what they bargained for. When I bought my property, I noticed the back was pretty well secluded and nobody could put anything back there because it was on other people's property with a pond. And I didn't bargain for a industrial site as a burrow pit. Thank you for me.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone have anything to add to the comments that we've heard? Yes, ma'am.
Joanne Hickman, and I live at one seventy-eight Midland Pines Road. I'm more concerned about tearing up the roads and exactly which are all those dump trucks going to go in one direction? There's no, nothing that says which way they would even go. I'm worried about the water level. You come out and go on on Marlowe Road, they may go that way, but what if they change their mind, decide to go the other way? Those are, those are ash roads. They're not paved. Old Marlowe Road, I believe, is ash, I'm not sure, but I live on, right off of Courthouse Extension and I know that's ash, it's not paved. And if the dump trucks start going down there, we won't be able to get in and out.
All right, thank you very much.
You wish to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Wendy Hall. I'm at ten sixty Midland Road. I just had a couple of questions to verify, couldn't quite hear with all. The permits, has he already been approved for the permits? I know it is in wetlands, I know it's in flood plain. I have them right here on my phone. So have they been approved or with the wetland? No, they haven't. Okay.
No, it's for, I mean, the rezoning is a necessary step
Okay.
before applying to the state for a mining permit. And at that time, the state, Environmental Protection Division would require the permit from the Corps of Engineers.
Okay.
So that, this is really one of the first official steps that would take place.
Also, the, where the driveway access, if this was approved, where is it again? I was, again, I'm.
Can you take, take a little step back and look at that screen up there?
I don't see a driveway on there.
No, the.
Well, it's not on the, it's, yeah, right there.
It's proposed for this area. Do you see where I'm moving?
Okay, all right, I just wanted, okay.
It's right here.
Yeah, thank you.
That's Midland Road.
Yeah, it's not here. It's not here, okay. And also, I was the same thing with my fellow neighbors with the dump trucks. I know there's lowlands, I know it's been approved by, down there by cargo, or down there where the dump trucks are, down by the lower end of Midland. But I know it's a real lowland right through there. It's like she said, it's ash. I drive a dump or a semi truck, I can't even come home that way because you get pulled over. The trucks with the traffic, you can't come down Midland, even with log trucks, you aren't supposed to. But they've been approved for down on the west end, that it's okay. But upward, this is proposed, you can't. So I don't know how that's going to go over. Also, he had said that he's going to be digging out of there, he doesn't know what timeline it is. My question is, I was looking at your ordinance, ordinances, and it says six months is the maximum that he, that they need to be for a pond to be done with.
That would be if it were less than an acre and approved by this body, but since it's going to the state, they're, they have jurisdiction and, and it becomes, it's a state mining permit. Our only role would be to rezone the land so that the applicant could go for.
It could be on for years on end, kind of like what's going down at the west end of the, okay, great. Well, I'm strictly opposed to this. There's dust, smell, emissions. I mean, we've got buffers, what are you doing with the buffers? I'm just right next door. There's a traffic issue. Like I said, I'm at ten eighty, or there's ten eighty, I'm at ten sixty, so everything's going to be pulling out right there. There's a, Marlowe Road's crooked, Helmy Drive's, there's five, yeah, there's five or six different intersections right there. With a traffic issue. I'm just saying, and like he was saying, there's thirty-five miles an hour, no one drives thirty-five miles down Midland. There are tens, tens of thousands of people coming every year, it's ten thousand people a year coming into Effingham County. Right, am I right? Right? Come on, you guys, I mean, seriously, this is a joke.
Ms. Hall, we.
God almighty.
Well, it's.
Well, y'all let it go, you know, y'all let it go. I've said my piece.
Thank you. So, is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
No, but I'd like to sign, I forgot.
Okay, that'll be fine. So I just want to, real quick, yes, sir, we got traffic and road damage, we got speeding, we got groundwater being affected, noise, dust, property devalue, time duration. I'd just like to, you know, try to keep it moving and, and present any, you know, if you've got something else or new, please.
I just want to make, make note that I opposed it because, like I said, I live at one nineteen Village Drive, right across Marlowe Road. And like this gentleman, he's my neighbor.
Yes, sir.
It's a racetrack, just like he said now. The traffic, there's more wrecks, that intersection right there already, and you can count. And you have all. And you have all these dump trucks going up and down the road, tearing up the road. It's just gonna be another hazard. We moved to that part of the county, built nice houses to live in and retire. I'm retired. You don't want to have to put up with all this crap.
All right.
Just wanted to...
Can I get you to state your name as well, please?
John Mills.
Tom...
John.
John Els?
Mills. M-I-L-L.
Mills. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Do you have anyone on Zoom?
No, sir.
No, sir.
I did want to ask the, when will this go before the county commissioner's decision?
We'll, we'll get you, we'll get you an answer for that in just, just a moment. Questions, comments from the board? Any discussion?
So the, the, from what we've submitted and we've seen in our packet, we do not have the wetlands delineation that's been discussed or that mentioned. And all we can go by, based off is what is, is in, in the packet that we have tonight.
Yeah, I mean, when I look at this, when I look at that or this screen right here, I mean, it's, this is just in the middle of a residential area. I mean, it's just plain and simple. So that's, that's my thoughts.
Any further discussion?
No.
I'll call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to deny the rezoning request based off of the information submitted to us.
Motion for denial. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Higgins. Are there's in favor of denial? Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Ms. Teresa, do you know when this will go before the commissioners?
Uh, this will be on the June seventh. The first Tuesday is the June seventh, I believe.
June seventh?
Board of Commissioners meeting agenda. Six PM in this room.
Be June the seventh at six PM in this room. All right, item number five is a public hearing for Backwater Expeditions. LLC is agent for Marie Remondo. Request to rezon 69.103 acres from Air One to PD Recreation to allow for the development of an ecotourism site located at 545 Wiley Road. And this is in the fourth district. Is there a representative here tonight for Backwater Expeditions?
Good evening. I'm Brian Cohen. I'm the owner of Backwater Expeditions. We've been in the county since 2000 doing tours up and down Ebenezer Creek. With the demand of tourism in the area increasing and lack of places for people to stay, we're proposing doing an eco-friendly campground. And so we're, I've been a member of the Georgia Conservancy, the River Savannah River Keepers. We've been working with them for years. We've also been working with the county and city on helping the Greenway open up more tourism opportunities in the area. We have Neil, he's our engineer. He'll be proposing informing y'all on the campground. But I'd just like to propose that we look at this open, open-mindedly.
Neil?
Yes, sir.
You ready?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Neil McKenzie with Coleman Company. Wanted to just take some time tonight and talk about the site plan and the process moving forward and what we've worked with staff to get to this point. I'm gonna try to make it so I can point to this. But, um, so this tract is, is off Wiley Road. It's approximately sixty-nine acres. Six acres of it is wet. But this is a, this is a planned development with the recreational component. This is a new classification that was, that was approved earlier this year for this type of project to come along. This, you know, in its completed condition, the plan would result in sixty-three RV spaces, thirteen primitive tent sites, and ten cabins. So what this is, is this site is split up into multiple parts. It will be built in pieces. So the plan is not to come in here and clear cut the whole thing and, you know, take all the trees out and destroy wetlands. That is not the intention of this plan. This project is, 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 is low impact.
So, Ms. McKenzie, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but what you just quoted, that was phase one?
What's, no, sir, that's the build out.
That was the build out?
Right, the count.
That was a total build out for both?
So, so which includes, so as part of that, there's a restaurant, storefront, mini golf. You know, there, there are multiple components of this thing that are split out in parts on this plan. The, the site access will be off Wiley Road. And there is an access easement that bisects the site to access the folks that are north of this parcel. The intention is to keep that easement open and make no impact to, to those folks' access to their lots. You'll notice too that the border around the entire perimeter does have a buffer. We're proposing fifty-foot buffers between us and residential. And then between us and the right of way, we've got twenty-five feet. And as of right now, that is proposed to just be natural buffers. The site is planned to be served with well and septic. And the, the, what we're asking the board for is to conditionally approve this, this action conditioned upon getting EPD approval for well and septic. With that, one other component of this that I think is key is, is, you know, Backwater Expeditions is gonna staff this permanently. So they're gonna operate and maintain this business. They will have staff on site at all times to regulate. The operation of the business here will be managed and governed by the PD, you know, by the documents. So there will be operating hours. There will be rules and expectations about noise and general activities on the site. So once again, I just want to close with, with, with saying again that this is, this is intended to be a low-impact project. We do not intend to come in here and clear cut and, and, and cut old growth trees and that kind of thing. And in fact, if the site plan can be, you know, if there's a large tree on site, we can adjust the site plan to, you know, to keep that tree intact and that kind of thing. And we're not gonna propose any wetland impacts. Just, um, just be a, be a benefit to the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. McKenzie. Questions, comments at this time?
I, I got, have a couple. So the wetlands, it is determined? Like, do you have a letter from the Corps?
It's in the process.
You go ahead and speak into the microphone, I'm sorry.
It's in the process. We have been, we have submitted to the Corps.
Okay, yeah, so...
Yeah, JD.
And then the buffers that are proposed around the site, I mean, they're varying in different widths and different spots. You said a natural buffer. Can you describe to me exactly what the natural buffer is going to be committing to?
Yeah, so, so that again, we can work with it. So right now, it's intended to be undisturbed natural buffer. In spots that don't quite meet the needs of the neighbors, we can plant those areas to make them thicker, or there, you know, other ways to supplement the, you know, the plantings in there to kind of increase the opacity of the buffer.
I may have some more later, but...
Yeah, that's good.
What did he say was gonna happen with this wastewater? I mean, have you perked that property? Do you have an, uh...
We are in the process, so we have not perked it yet. We based our map on topo maps and that kind of thing and just, you know, and just light our...
So no approval from the Health Department?
No, sir. Not yet.
It's a great little vision.
So can, can you just explain to me, I guess, your hopes and dreams? I mean, is, I know, I know you do kayaking. So are you planning on people coming to kayak and hang out in their camper or...
We're planning on short-term people visiting. Most, most campers usually travel hours to four hours away from home. So we're looking to get some of the local people in the areas plus people that are in the outskirts. A lot of people that we receive right now do go to Savannah. We get people from all over the world coming in, and they actually come to us to learn about Ebenezer Creek. With that, we don't have any accommodations to keep the people here. And there's no way we're gonna be getting anything anytime soon until we can increase the tourism traffic, and then we could possibly get more hotels interested in us. Right now, we got a lot of revenue that leaves the county because of that. This is a low-impact way to test the water to see if we can increase the tourism. We've been, I've been working on this for like over twenty years. I've been dreaming about it. In the last ten years, I've been working on it, trying to find the right place. Like I said, we work with the Georgia Conservancy, the River Keepers. So trying to find a location on the creek or the river has been hard and impossible. But luckily, the landowner would rather do that than a development going in. We have talked about it extensively, and they're very excited about the opportunity this presents the county.
So if I did my math correct, I mean, you're talking about sixty-three RV camper spots?
Yes, sir.
I mean, are those temporary? I mean, is there...
Yes, we're not proposing long-term. We don't want a long-term business.
What do you call temporary?
Uh, well, we're asking up for, up to six months, but usually most people are gonna be...
All right, I'm, I'm, everybody, everybody will get their turn. I'm sorry.
But ultimately, basically, it will be, you have, you ask for more than what you want, you know? So, but we do expect it to be no more than two weeks. If we have anybody, any longer than that...
Can I ask, can I, can I ask everybody to please hold the comments down? We'll, we'll give everybody a chance to speak.
If we have anybody that would be staying longer, would only be like a camp worker that travels around from campground to campground working in for an exchange for a place to stay. We will be residing on the property ourselves also, in addition to a couple of our staff members to allow, allow us to control all areas of the campground. We'll put, we'll have our people in different areas that will actually monitor those areas so we don't, we get ahead of the situation before it gets to be a problem.
So maybe this is a question for you, Mr. McKenzie. I mean, I see a lot of parking, residential camping units, the commercial. It totals up pretty good. I mean, is that impervious parking?
No.
No, sir. The plan is to be rock.
To be rock?
And, and that, that parking shown there is, is, you know, is, is maximized. I think that's as, you know, as much as you could fit. And the intention is, 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 is for these, you know, these areas up front could be public, right? You could have an outdoor venue. You could have folks coming in here to, you know, enjoy events put on by this, you know, by the business. So the intention is to provide as much parking as you can just to, you know, to invite people in and come take part.
So, I mean, with the rock parking lots, the rooftops, I mean, the, the square footage, I mean, are you not concerned about runoff into the creek?
So this, so there's not a lot of, of impervious on here. So you've got some, some, you know, you've got, you do have rooftops of the cabins, and the cabins are small. You do have rooftops for the bathrooms, that kind of thing. But it, but once again, compared to the rest of the site, it's small. We're not coming in here and paving this whole thing. We're not gonna completely just level it and, and, you know, make it all one, you know, one large rooftop. We are, we are, you know, ethically bound to do stormwater detention and management per, per state law. So that, that's, that is definitely part of this plan.
The pavers were proposing for like the RVs to park on are gonna be pervious. They'll allow water to go through them. They'll blend in with the area. So we're not really gonna really change the footprint. If, and this is just proposed max, but if we go in here and we have a tree that's in our way, we're gonna move things out of the way to keep the trees that we can and cut just as little as we can. So we're not gonna create more erosion, and we're still gonna be able to control it. The pavers and the driveway, the roads will be rock or crush and run. But the area is started, allow water to soak in as opposed to runoff.
How many...
Is there a boat landing there to get onto that creek?
There is a section down here at the point here that it goes to the creek. It has a cove in it.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ryan.
I guess it's getting into the weeds a bit, and I know it's probably not that level on the site plan. But how many RVs can you stack internally before you would start stacking out onto the road?
Um, so this entrance here, you've probably got space for five of them right here. And then it would start to stack out. So this would be a controlled access point. The idea is you have to come in here, check in, and then go to your, your spot.
And that, and that's another reason why the parking is so big, to allow us to have parking in here for the RVs and campers as they check in as opposed to be on the roadway.
So each RV has black water, and it's gonna tap into your septic?
Yes, sir. And also, we're, we're the only agency that's reg, or we're regulated by the Department of Public Health and EPD. Once we get inspected and approved to put systems in, we're regularly inspected, just like the city or county would be on waste treatment and water. So that's also to take into account that we will be monitored heavier than any other industry in the community.
And as part of a planned development, you know, there are things that make the project unique and it aligns definitely to my vision of what a planned development is. But walk me through, why don't we know a little bit more? Like, why haven't we studied the, the subject avail...
We do not own the property. We want to do diligence right now. It's a sketch drawing. This is not a master plan yet.
And I, I understand that, right? But the wetlands are similar, right? You wanna know what the wetlands are on the property too, and you've gone through that process. So I was just trying to understand.
Correct. Yeah, to do the, to do all the perks, all the tests, perk test, drilling, soil samples and all that's gonna cost us another forty, sixty thousand dollars. So we would like to know if we're doing it in vain or not. But we do plan to be a good neighbor and an environmentally conscious neighbor. Over half the property is gonna be left natural. So that's, we could go in there and cram as many as we can in there, and that's not our objective. We want to teach people about the environment. That's what our tours are about. That's what we've been about for the last twenty years we've been here. We've been doing river cleanups and working with the different agencies and governments and, and around. We work with the Historical Society. I'm on board of directors. So getting tourism going up here is our big, big concern.
Anything further, sir? All right, sir. We may have some questions for you gentlemen later.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Pratt Summers. Let me get this information down here real quick. First off, I want to thank everybody for showing up tonight and participating in this process. See a lot of friends and neighbors here, and, you know, I've, I've been to several of these zoning meetings, getting prepared for this, and I haven't seen a crowd of this size. So I appreciate everybody participating in this public process. First, let me start by saying that I don't have any personal grudge against Backwater Expedition or, or its developer, Brian Cohen. I have to admit, I'm kind of expired, inspired by his commitment to follow his dream. And I know he's been working on this a long time. And from the product of the work that, that you see here and the thought that's gone into it, it's obvious he's, he's invested a considerable amount of time and resources into this development. I hope likewise that he won't take personal offense at, at what I have to say this evening, but I have to speak from my perspective. I live in one of the five residences that would have to transit the quarter mile down through the development, through the proposed RV park to, to access my existing home. You know, my home was a product of my dreams as well. And my wife, Kim, and I designed it, and we worked with the Kiefer Brothers to build it ourselves. Like so many of us, our homes represent a considerable amount of our net worth. And they have to be used sometimes to fund our retirements, so we have to guard its value. Four of the five houses that would have to transit the RV park were built in the 2002, 2003 timeframe. I, I know that, I know that at least four are represented here tonight. I don't see the fifth.
Um, I don't see the fifth. Um, Ms. Yvonne Hallman lived down the easement much longer. When she learned of this potential development, she sold her house and 11 acres to Ms. Diane Price, who's here tonight. She may or may not speak. Uh, she only learned of this development, uh, after closing. And so, uh, there's another 11 acres adjacent to this property that's been put on the market since they received their public zoning notice from the county. And, uh, those property owners are clearly anticipating a decrease in their value and, and they've sold out. And I, I've got too much invested in this community and my residence to walk away so quickly. According to Zillow, the five residences that would have to transit the RV park totaled a, um, combined value of 2.3 million dollars. I can see these five families losing 25 to 35% of their property, uh, or their value if they've gotta drive a quarter mile down through, uh, an RV park to get to their houses. Uh, so that, that would amount to somewhere around 800,000 dollars. There are 16 other contiguous properties with a combined value of 3.5 million. If those families only lost 10% of the value of their property, that would be another 350,000. This is a residential community. The, the 20 surrounding properties and the ones surrounding those are all AR1, AR2, or AR3. And, you know, I've, I've tried to find the words to express my feelings about the incompatibility of this zoning proposal, but I, I can't express it any better than the, than the words that make up the preamble to the Mobile Home Zoning Ordinances, which include RV parks. And that, that ordinance reads, "It's the intent of Effingham County Board of Commissioners through the regulations of this article to provide separate areas for mobile home development. Separate areas are provided because mobile homes are constructed to different design standards than conventional dwelling units, and the mixture of the two in close proximity has a destabilizing effect on both housing types. Separate areas for mobile home development also allow for greater density than is allowed in other residential districts." This, um, this development will be an unnecessary nuisance for the five residences that have, that have to transit that quarter mile through the RV park. Our formerly, our formerly private easement would be, be intersected with the, uh, commercial RV parks' road network in three different locations. Our houses would be behind the facade of Backwater's RV park, and Backwater has shown no plans to distinguish our residences as private. Backwater's patrons would freely roam our driveways, properties, and consider our private pools, ponds, and creek access as part of their amenities. Beyond the issues relating to zoning incompatibility, Backwater Expedition's zoning application and site development plan do not meet the county's minimum requirements for planned development consideration. Uh, and, and, and I'm a little bothered, I guess, maybe I don't understand the process. I'm new at this. If, um, if they're asking for a planned development, um, approval, then they have to build in a planned development. You can't, you can't say, okay, this is, this is a, a temporary rendition, get your zoning, and then, and then not come back before this group. If this is approved, this is what has to be built. That's, that's my understanding. So the idea that we can change parking spaces on the fly is, is not, that's, that's not my understanding of this process. But, but, you know, I, I may stand corrected. There are, there are a couple other inadequacies in this plan. And, and, and I appreciate some of the questions because I think you've already hit on them. Uh, Section 5.7.12 requires community wells or public water. Uh, no individual wells are allowed, according to the code. There's no public water available and no Georgia EPD approval for a community well in this permit. More importantly, uh, this property is under the Coastal Moratorium for Community Wells, uh, to protect the Florida aquifer, the Floridian aquifer, I should say. This development would require public water, which is not available. Backwater's application, uh, seeks to approval to sell water to, uh, 538 overnight guests. That's the size of this. I mean, uh, they wanna, they've got the 538, uh, 538 overnight guests. They wanna run a convenience store, a restaurant, two commercial kitchens at their pavilions, as well as supply their other amenities. And what they have proposed is a two-to-three private well network with no other details. Their application says it's a private well and, uh, and, and that's not allowed under the code. According to their site development plan, two of these three wells are within 75 feet of their own sewage drain fields. Planned development ordinance requires a proof of water supply, and Backwater cannot provide such approval. So that, that's the first point, the water. Section 5.7.12 also states that mobile home RVs may not share a septic system. If public sewer is not available, then lots must meet health department-sized regulations to accommodate individual septic systems. Since there's no public sewer available and no Georgia EPD approval for the handling of the sewage in Backwater's application, uh, there is no approval. So Backwater has not provided the spacing for the individual septic systems, as you can see. They plan on trying to permit a custom communal sewage system for 91 occupied spaces, for which they provided no details, other than showing nine drain fields on the plan. Uh, and they have admitted that they have not, um, you, you just heard tonight, they haven't performed any soil studies, so they don't even know if their drain field locations are viable. They also have not located the private wells of the adjacent property owners. Uh, I know mine and the Hanson's are back up to two of their drain fields. Uh, so they, they, they don't know if there's a conflict, um, there with our, with our existing wells. Section 3F20 of the planned development ordinance calls for a depiction of the fire lanes and fire hydrants on the site development plan. Backwater sites that it will install a thousand gallon, you know, couple, I didn't say how many, thousand gallon rainwater cisterns for firefighting, but they don't identify how many, locate them on their plan, and provide plans for pressurization or delivery of the water. A development of this scale with 538 overnight guests warrants a dedicated fire safety plan. In my, in my opinion, it should be reviewed by the fire marshal. There are no plans for providing firewater within the tightly-packed RV sites, and there's only 20-foot-wide, one-way dirt roads from which the fire department could stage to fight a fire. Given that Backwater encourages campfires within our development, uh, do, you can see that in the narrative of their application, this could be a recipe for disaster for their customers and the adjoining properties. Section 3F20 of the planned development ordinance calls for a location of proposed drainage systems, including offside areas of interconnection. There is no stormwater pollution prevention plan, no secondary containment structures, or any site drainage details whatsoever to address the stormwater drainage onto adjacent properties into the wetlands and eventually to Ebenezer Creek. There are no provisions to address containment of faulty or negligent sewage connections for the 63 RV sites. And another point, although not specifically called out in the planned development ordinance, there needs to be a traffic study performed prior to considering Backwater's application. Uh, simply put, this is a commercial applica, uh, this is a commercial operation being masqueraded as recreational due to the theme of the commercial oper, the, the, the commercial operation. This really is not recreational. This is commercial, make no mistake. There are 291 parking spaces in the front of the development, and by, by my estimate, there will be another 128 vehicles in the back in the RV park for a combined total of 419 vehicles. By comparison, uh, there are 506 parking spaces in front of the Kroger in Rincon, and it has five paved access points with signalized intersections. So I'm curious how the roads are gonna handle this traffic. Backwater is proposing a single dirt road entry point and 24 and 20-foot-wide dirt road networks, many of which are one-way within the property. The road network should be paved with proper easements for the amount of commercial traffic that it will receive with the large diesel-driven pusher motorhomes and fifth-wheel campers. And that, the narrative of Backwater's permit application describes access to the Ebenezer Creek, and the site development plan depicts a bait shop and boat storage, yet there's no detail for creek access in the plan. Commercial creek access would require a U.S. Army Corps of Engineers permit, which we, we don't see. Finally, Section 3E3 of the planned development ordinance requires Backwater to provide, um, the specifically contemplated form of ownership of develop, of the development, um, for example, Fee Simple Horizontal Property Regime, Property Owners Association, and detailed provisions for the maintenance responsibility for all improvements, including but not limited to parking areas, bikeways, pedestrian ways, storm drainage facilities, water and sewer systems, open spaces, private streets, et cetera. I'm not finding these details in Backwater's application. I'm also not finding any depth to Backwater Expeditions LLC. The application states they've been in continuous operation since 2000, but the Georgia Corporate Registry shows that they opened in 2005, let their registration lapse in 2008, dissolved in 2010, and reopened in 2020. They do not own the property. I presume they are going to purchase it through a contingent, uh, contingent upon zoning approval and financing. And I think this needs to be understood. The operating capital and maintenance on a commercial development of this scale is considerable. Backwater stated in their open house that they have no corporate affiliation like KOA. So where are the resources coming from to develop and maintain this property? The county will do a disservice to itself and the residents if the property owner and perhaps a bank, if it does, if it loans money without doing the due diligence. Um, if it approves this zoning request contingent on Backwater obtaining future approvals from the Georgia EPD, if they do not materialize. So, and finally, I, I, I really appreciate this opportunity to speak in this public forum, and I appreciate y'all's patience, um, in, uh, letting me share this much information without, without kicking me out of here. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
I have my own.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, most of you know I'm Mickey Kicklider. Um, Ed Hanson and Pratt asked me to come speak. Um, I dodged them for months, and they showed up Friday, or Ed showed up Friday and wouldn't let me get away. And so then I met with Ed and Pratt on Saturday. And after I read Pratt's notes, I said, I don't know what y'all guys need me for, but I'm coming. Um, but anyhow, I'm here and I do have a, a few, um, follow-ups. Uh, with, um, and I'm not gonna go into detail much about the application 'cause I think Pratt did an excellent job. Um, I don't know if he made copies of his, uh, presentation for y'all, but if he didn't, he needs to, so y'all could look at it. But with regard to the application itself, there are a couple of points I would like to make. And the first one was, in the application, it says, "Does the property have other reasonable economic use?" And Mr. Cohen, uh, again, like Pratt, I have no personal issues with Mr. Cohen. In fact, I've never met him. Um, and I would love to kayak, but I'd probably sink it. But anyhow. Anyhow, uh, he said, "No, there's no other commercial use." But the surrounding property is basically what we call here in Effingham County mini-farms. They're five to 11 to 12, 18-acre tracks. So I called a local real estate praiser slash real estate agent here in the county and said, "What are those, you know, if you had a 70-acre track and you divide it up into mini-farms, what could you sell them for?" And, and, uh, I was told that easily $8,000 an acre. And then when I said it was in the Ebenezer Creek area, I was told probably a minimum of 12,000 an acre. But at 8,000 an acre, they're worth 550-plus thousand dollars, the property is. There is a optional economic use. Now, when I was on the planning board, which was many years ago, probably Dave and Peter are the only ones who remember those days. But, uh, one of the things that would bother me when people would come in and oppose something, you know, my thought process, well, why didn't they just buy it? Well, number one, this property was not ever listed and put on the market. And number two, they have in fact reached out to the owner of this property and attempted to buy it and do stand ready, willing, and able to follow through on those attempts, obviously not at an unreasonable price. But, um, there is a viable economic alternative to the use of this property. The other thing that I wanted to comment on in the application is, uh, and I think it's question five, "Describe how rezoning will allow a use that is suitable in view of the uses and development of adjacent and nearby properties." And the answer was, "It would benefit from increased tourism and increased property values." Um, that, in my opinion, is not accurate. And I don't think it may have been deliberately misleading, but the, uh, increased property values, as Pratt noted, he thinks there'll be a decrease of 25-plus percent. I think he's way low. You would not purchase Pratt's property or any other, Ed's property or any of the other adjoining properties for anywhere near their current value if you had to drive through an RV park to get to that property. So I think, I think there is a significant decrease in property values. Uh, there, as Pratt told you, there are five you have to drive through, but there are 13 adjoining properties, by my count, that actually touch, uh, the RV park. And then there are, um, uh, a few across the street, I think six or eight, I don't remember, that would all be directly impacted. And I suspect the entire area would be impacted on a financial basis. Now, what are the other issues that I wanna, um, address? Number one, and I, and I found this interesting, and I thought, and I do believe, uh, but I know the proposal is in vi, violation of the Effingham County Comprehensive Plan. Uh, and I note with interest that, uh, Mr. Cohen was actually on the committee that did the Comprehensive Plan. And I suspect he's responsible for this, but there are, uh, a few specific references to Ebenezer Creek and the Ebenezer Historic Area, uh, that are mentioned in the Comprehensive Plan. Now, why, why do I bring that up? Now, now, again, those of you who are familiar, when I was on the planning board, I fought like Hades to keep the county from accepting, uh, the Department of Community Affairs requirements that required us to have a comprehensive plan. And quite frankly, I, uh, fought that, which would have kept us from receiving DCA grants. But the reason I fought that is because I didn't want the state telling us how we're going to do zoning in Effingham County. But once we accepted that, and once we agreed to have a comprehensive plan, we are bound to follow that Comprehensive Plan. And this plan is in violation of what the Comprehensive Plan asked y'all to do, which is preserve that corridor. The other issue that I wanna bring up is this plan, as Pratt already pointed out, is in violation of the Effingham County zoning cord, uh, zoning code for mobile home parks. And our code specifically requires a separation of mobile home parks, which RV parks are a subset of, and residential areas. And it specifically references, as part of that basis, the economic impact on what's gonna happen if you put them together. It's gonna decrease the value of the regular residences. Now, even more importantly, and everybody's danced around this and nobody's hit it specifically, the reason why they don't have a water and sewer plan is because this development cannot meet the Department, Georgia Department of Public Health requirements. Under the Georgia Department of Public Health requirements, a, um, tourist accommodation is required to have a public water system. All right, now what is a tourist accommodation? A tourist accommodation is any enterprise that seeks to rent 25 or more temporary residents. They could be RVs, they could be, uh, uh, camping sites, they could be cabins. But under the Department of, uh, Georgia Department of Public Health Regulations, um, Regulation 511-6-2.07, uh, number one, "The water supply shall comply with all federal, state, and local laws and ordinances related to safe drinking water. The following shall apply as well. A public water system must be used by any tourist accommodation that regularly serves an average of 25 trailer spaces or guest rooms for at least 60 days out of the year." Now, they've indicated you, they wanna be open 365 days. Uh, they've got 64 RV spots. I think the total in the whole development's around 90, 94. Um, so they way, uh, exceed the minimum. But even if you're under 25, you still have to have an approved water system, which they don't have. But 25 and over, it has to be a public water system. And then there are a lot of specific requirements on pressures and all of that, uh, specifics. They also have a provision for the sewage, uh, capability. Now, under, um, the regs, you can have a pri, private sewage system, but it has to have a water treatment component. treatment component of it before you release the affluent. What does that mean? That means septic tanks will not qualify. You have to have a private sewage system and you have to have a separate sewage system for those RVs that are self-contained, where they dump before they leave. You have to have a separate dump site and it has requirements on that as well. Those are very specific. This project does not meet either the water requirements or the sewage requirements of the Georgia Department of Public Health. Now, having only been, discussed this with Ed and Pratt on Saturday, there are things I didn't get to that I do think are significant and there are probably violations there as well. One, I didn't get to the Federal Clean Water Act. And it is very specific on what you can and cannot do in river basins, creek basins. Ebenezer Creek would be such a protected entity. I suspect this has violations, but I can't tell you that it does. The other thing I didn't get a chance to look at today when I was getting ready is the county road ordinances. I do not believe this plan is going to meet the county road ordinance requirements. I suspect these roads are going to have to have 60 foot wide easements due to the number of people, the ability to have emergency service, the ability to bring in a fire truck, to be able to bring in the pumper. And remember, some of the vehicles coming in here are going to be those big RVs that a dirt road or even a gravel road is not going to be able to support those sufficiently. And it's not going to be able to handle an emergency situation. Now, I'm not telling you that the county road ordinance applies, I mean, applies because I didn't get a chance to look at it, but I suspect it does. And I know these roads don't meet the requirements of the county road ordinance. For those reasons and for everything that Pratt said, now, I almost took Pratt's thunder and took his paper and read it to y'all, but he did too. And those of you who don't know, he's a Georgia Tech engineer and that's why he's so brilliant. But for all the reasons stated, we would ask that you recommend the county decline approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kicklider.
I'm sorry I didn't wear my coat, but it was hot.
No kidding. So is there anyone that has anything to add to these two gentlemen's statements? Do you have something you wish to add?
Yeah, if I, if I could, Pratt Summers, again, if I could just read a quick letter, there's a, there's a resident here that's a little timid, she didn't want to stand up. Her name's Hannah Kessler, she's behind me here. I'll read her letter. Hi, my name is Hannah Kessler. I've lived at 215 High Bluff Road for over 15 years, and that's just two properties further down High Bluff Road. We were, we were so excited to build our very first home, the American dream on our property and never thought twice about commuting over an hour to and from work as we have enjoyed peaceful serenity and the natural beauty of our surroundings. My husband and I have spoken with Mr. Cohen and have voiced our concerns and we are now currently under the impression we will have pioneer camping and drainage behind our property. We do have a buffer strip of property between us and the park. My husband is an avid hunter and my self-loving nature, it concerns us of stray folks getting lost crossing onto, onto our property unannounced. I believe this RV park has already uprooted many families, some have already sold and moved. What they have always loved about this community is soon going to disappear. I do not want our neighborhood commercialized with more traffic congestion and noise. That is why I moved out to Effingham County to get away from all of that. Ebenezer Creek is a beautiful place that I enjoy kayaking, boating and hiking myself and I wish for it to remain the same and not be commercialized. Do these wetlands really have to be encroached upon? I do enjoy camping in state parks, I believe that is where camping should remain. Some of our current neighbors will have their whole life disrupted by this park in their backyards. No privacy, no entryways to their prop, their own property that they have lived on for many years. Would you want this in your backyard? I don't hear a band for, I don't hear a band for hours during the day, would you? I don't want to hear a band for hours during the day, would you? I agree with growth to an extent, but the, but in the proper areas of business. Is our road ready for this growth? It will only back up into Wiley Road, but also into Longbridge, Ebenezer, Rankin-Stilwell, Ebenezer and Old Augustin, Highway 21 with additional vehicles, campers, boats and golf carts. Please reconsider taking into account many rules and regulations and changes that need to be put into place to help keep our community safe and clean.
And that was from?
Ms. Hannah Kessler.
Hannah Kessler, okay. Thank you, Mr. Summers.
Yeah, 215 High Bluff Road.
Good evening. My name is Andy Hudson. I must say, I cannot give you anything scientifically or legally. I think they kind of covered it pretty good. But I will tell you, I'm going to give you something personally. I've been a lifelong resident of Effingham County. And I've been a steward of Ebenezer Creek since my childhood. This rezoning, in my personal opinion, is hideous in its nature. The narrative is commercialization and it's evident in its scope and depth. As most people know, I've been a businessman for 27 years in my beloved Effingham County. And also the surrounding counties. I too well know of selfish ambitions. Now, I don't know the gentleman, I'm just telling you personally, this is a travesty. And selfish ambition, less than its own demise, causes ill to the property owners and the future enjoyment as it relates to our beautiful Effingham County. So if anybody wanted to commercialize this thing, since I've been here, I'm 55, so I've been here 54 and a half, I ain't seen it. So these people have everything invested. Their retirement, their grandchildren, their children. As a little boy, I went down that creek many, many times. My brother passed away three years ago. He too was a lifelong resident of this community, but he moved on to North Georgia. He, he got cancer. And my brother says, your name was Andy? He's my bigger brother. I'm the little one. I'm the one that's got divorced. He says, you know, Andy, I'm coming home. Do you think you and I can go down to Ebenezer Creek one more time? You see, it's personal to me. And I fight it for every monetary thing I have to see this not come to fruition. Thank you for your time and God bless us.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson.
Hello, my name is George Pratt. If you look at the plat, my property is at 150 Half Moon Road. It is this one right here, goes to about right here. I got 1,200 feet, linear feet, that's going to directly border this development. My biggest concern is basically keeping these people out of my property. So, you know, I mean, I guess I could fence it, that would be my option. But also the noise that's going to come from this, and I was told by, I talked to Mr. Cohen about my concerns, he said that he was going to put a rule that no noise, no music or anything after 8:00 PM. Well, in, in the summer, it, you know, it don't get dark at 8:00 PM. And if you're out there camping on the weekend and you're around a campfire and you're enjoying it, you're going to have your music playing, you'll be laughing and joking, and I'm going to hear everything that people are saying because the first camp sites along here are going to be less than 100 feet from my swimming pool. So, and a 50 foot natural buffer is about three pine trees in Georgia. So, you know, I, that's, and, and I appreciate that they're attempting to put in a buffer, but just a natural vegetated buffer isn't going to do anything to appease the noise and, and just basically the voyeurism of the campers that are interested in what's going on outside the campground. So I'm a little bit concerned about that. And the only other concern I have is I kayak the creek. I moved to Effingham County in 1998 after I retired from the Navy, moved to Hickory Knob in a subdivision. We looked long and hard to find someplace where we could get out of the subdivision environment and we found that the Ebenezer area was perfect for us. The homes were on these mini farms, these AR1, five acre, one home. So we're like, this is great, you know? And all the homes around there are, are the same. So we, we really, you know, we moved there for that privacy. And I promise you, when I have 80 something campers that have up to four people per camper in there, that privacy's history. So really that is, those are my biggest concerns and, and although all the legal stuff was really covered already, I just want to let you know that that's the impact it's going to have on me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Could I just ask the show of hands for the number of people who are opposed to this development? All right, thank you. So, you know, we'll, we'll sit here and listen to everyone's comments all night, you know, as long as it takes, but we've got a long list so far. And, you know, so if we could, you know, any new information, we'd, we'd appreciate it. So, yes, sir.
I live at 189 High Bluff Road. My name is Mike Alderman. I'll make this real quick. This is about as low impact as a boat and 747 crashing in your front yard.
My name is Stephen Andrews. I live at 515 Wiley Road, which is this piece of property right here. Okay? So as you can see, his plans, he has a restaurant, you have a parking lot with 280 plus parking spaces, you have a convenience store. You know, we, we both work, we both get up at 5:00 AM in the morning, we both go to sleep, this is about our bedtime. I mean, we, we go work out in the mornings. So, I mean, we, we try to do the best we can with what we got. This is going to totally destroy everything that we have, totally.
I've been a resident of the area for 40 years. I grew up on Half Moon Road, right there on the creek. My, um, the dock my dad built, still down there next to Linda Saster's house. It would be a travesty to have this in our area. I grew up with a fishing pole in my hand and I've been up and down the Ebenezer Creek many, many times and, um, it would be terrible for it to be commercialized. Also, most of us either work really hard to have what they have or someone works really hard for them to have what they have. And, um, I can't just, we can't just pick up and go somewhere else in the county because a campground's coming next to us. It was just, we're out here for our privacy, we don't want to be bothered. We want to come home after long days of work and sit on our back porch and watch the kids play or enjoy our coffee or whatever, like some people have said earlier. So thank you for your time.
Ma'am, can I get your name?
Charlene, Charlene Andrews. Thank you.
Is there any additional information?
I don't have additional information, but you know I can't keep quiet.
Yeah, I knew that.
My name is Beth Helmy. I live at 307 Wiley Road. My ancestors have been in this county since 1734. The only thing I want to say is, this is destroying what's made him a living because the creek should stay pristine. We already have a DRT plant on one end that we have to monitor right now. If you put something like this on it, the Ebenezer Creek you have today will not exist anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Helmy.
Me and mine haven't been here.
Sir, I need you to speak in that microphone, please.
Me and mine have not been here since the 1700s. I've been here, I was one of the.
Sir, I'm sorry, could you address the board?
I'll address you, yes, sir. I went to the first class of Ebenezer Middle School, going seventh through eighth, and then Effingham High School, graduated. I'm a little irate if you can't tell, so I'm going to just try to be respectful and positive.
You're, you're fine.
I'm not trying to be funny and I'm not trying to be weird. I think that if every person here who showed up with a, a negative mindset, that if you would just talk with Brian after this, one-on-one, I think that if you knew what's in his heart, I think that if you knew his true intentions, I think that if you knew the reality of the situation versus the, the petition against it, which was full of nothing but false information, the pitcher alone had deer that ain't even from our area. The DRT thing, Brian, would you please tell us about the DRT situation and your involvement in it, sir?
Sir, we'll, we'll get him to come up here in a minute.
Okay, then I'll tell you, I'll tell you my version of it. Basically, DRT came in and they was going to put pollution into the creek, right? Well, why did that get stopped? Why, why is that not the case right now? He's too humble to, and, and too honest to say that it was him, but I'll stand here and I'll say that it was him because he's the one who knew about it. He's the one who printed the flyers. He's the one who paid somebody to, to hand them out to everybody's houses. He's the one who had good people, just like every single one of y'all, who we appreciate more than you know. Even if you leave with a negative mindset of this, you, we have more in common than, than we have opposed. And you may be against this, but you are our kind of people just by your presence here today and we appreciate it either way. But basically, Brian had a situation like this where he had about 200 people show up from those flyers that he paid for, where he paid for somebody to hand them out, and then it was ended up prevented to where now DRT has to take that pollution outside of the, outside of the county. So you're worried about pollution? Brian's the one stopping the pollution from the creek. Brian's mere existence keeps the creek safe. Every single time we go out there on a kayaking tour, we bring out more trash than, than anyone's ever put in it. What was that deer?
Ma'am, ma'am, I'm, I'm sorry, we're, we're not going, we're, we're not going to get in a, a conversation back and forth, I'm sorry.
Understood. So for the neighbors, I, I totally get y'all's point of view. And I think that, not to speak on his behalf, but Brian gets y'all point, y'all's point of view. He lives at the end of a street and then his driveway is at the, the further end of the street, it's as far back as you can get. So again, we have a lot in common. But to say that someone can't buy property next to you and do whatever they want with it, that's a little bit against life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness, I think. I think that's a little bit against loving your neighbor. I think it's a little bit against, everybody moved out there to be able to do their own thing, that way you don't have a homeowners association telling you what to do, but then you're going to turn around and do that yourselves? And I say that respectfully with, with limits. I, I understand your concerns and they are honestly, more than you would believe, our concerns as well. The noise violation thing, Effingham County already has a noise ordinance where it starts at 10. If you come onto private property in which Brian Cohen owns and he says, turn your radio off at 8, guess what you got to do? People worried about people going onto their property, you don't go to Walmart and then wonder if I can walk into the apartments next door. It, it's, it's pretty clear, you know, what you're there to do and what you can't do. Another gentleman had said that he was invested in the community. I wouldn't dare think that he hasn't or isn't, but if Brian would stand up here and tell you all of the organizations that he's been a part of this whole time, I don't think that anyone else will still be able to keep their hand raised as to what he has done. All that he's proposing to do with the stage, it's an acoustic guitar. That's like some, one of y'all playing a guitar on your front porch and your neighbor's telling you, you can't. A little bit out of line, I think respectfully. Talked about the roads couldn't support a fire truck to come in. Well, that's probably a situation we should go ahead and address, isn't it? Talking about we can't have a RV go up the road, then how's everybody who owns RVs get their RV to their house? And we just so happen to know a guy who's been a firefighter for 18 years, who goes around the entire country and increases firefighter stations for things of this sort. So it's kind of convenient, I think. I think that a, a big reason why so many people are opposed to this is because of false information. I, I, I know. I think the reason why so many of the neighbors have a problem with this, very respectfully, is because they're using the property as if it is their own, although they don't own it, such as the gentleman who's. it, such as the gentleman whose pool you can dip your toe into from the property marker. Was he worried about a buffer? What about the gentleman whose shed crosses over the property line? Or his junk cars? Or who cleared out the barrier, the buffer, excuse me? And so now there is no buffer. That's all I've got. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Is there any new information? Yes, ma'am.
I don't know about new information, but I am seventy-one years old, and I'm coming up here to build my dream home. And it is not available to buy the property that we would have loved to bought because it wasn't even offered. I don't know if there's paid for it yet, but I mean, if they have, they're crazy, but if they haven't, I've been here since I was thirteen, and I just wanted to say, my dream home is gone now, because their property literally puts up.
So, you're an adjacent property owner?
Exactly.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I am, and my daughter-in-law is, but my, we're going to build, we got eleven acres, so we got room to build.
Did she state her name?
And I just wanted to say-
Could I get you to state your name, ma'am?
Gail Greiner.
Gail Greiner.
Blessing. There's nothing up in Effingham to come see. My son, my son works for the state at Skidaway State Park, and when he heard of this battle, he thought, if it was anything up here, um, the state park would build something. But I don't think they're doing that.
All right, thank you, Ms. Greiner.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone with any new information? Or any, yes, sir.
Hey, my name's Alan Newkirk, and I'll, um, I'll try to keep it to new information. Obviously, I concur, and I'm speaking for my parents. They own 305 Wiley Road, which is just across Half Moon. It, um, it's all this property over here, and anyway, they asked me to come up and speak towards this. We concur with every, pretty, pretty much everything that everybody else has said. The couple of things that I wanted to note that I think is new information that hasn't been noted, or maybe partially, for the commercial building, it's my understanding you have to have a thousand gallons per minute for life safety, and beyond having the, all the testing and everything else, I'm not aware that, um, there's anything that they can do to come up with a thousand gallons per minute. Obviously, the cisterns, I mean, if they're five-thousand-gallon cisterns, that's going to last five minutes. That's not really going to fight a fire. The other big thing is, uh, which I think is probably intentionally left off of the site plan, is the topography. My parents own this property across the street. This entire basin drains onto their property. From this retention pond right here to this point is a drop of about twenty-five feet. There's no retention pond to stop the stormwater runoff that's going to be created by the, by the gravel roads. Crusher run is not a pervious product. Um, I know we talked about the permeable camping pads, but the, the, all the, all the crusher run is not pervious, so it has to be accounted for some way. Right now, it's just going to directly dump of twenty-five feet of fall from here to here onto my parents' property, which is going to bring all the sediment. Um, in this case, I'd almost say that asphalt would be better than the crusher run, because crusher run is, there's a great deal of sediment that's going to wash off in the big storm events, that's going to drain right into my parents' property here. There's almost thirty feet of fall, and I, between this retention pond and the Ebenezer Creek, there's no, um, I'm sorry, but yeah, between that and that, there's no retention planned for that. There's a big, there's a big valley right here. The reason that the topography's not on the plan is because none of the sites going to be, i- is, is possible, because once you grade it out, you've got to clear everything. They're not going to keep any of these streets, because all this has got to be regraded for the retention. None of it makes sense, and it's intentionally, it's on the, on the sketch plan requirement that the topography's supposed to be here, and it was conveniently left off. And obviously, that's the reason. Um, and the last thing, and I'm trying to keep it short for y'all, I know y'all have heard me a lot. This, when you talk about the acoustics, my parents' house is probably, I'm guessing, two-thousand feet from right here to here. This is a big hill, twenty-five to thirty feet. We can hear people having conversations at their house here. Well, if they have a band that plays a music festival all weekend long, you're going to hear, when the creek's high, you're going to hear that all the way to Stillwell. I mean, you're going to hear it word for word. It's, it's a, it's a, it's almost a mile of glass surface all the way to Stillwell. But I think, I think that's everything, so thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Newkirk.[967.13][967.13](APPLAUSE).
And I'm, I want to say one more thing. I've worked for the Nature Conservancy. I've done projects for them, and I'm not aware that they would allow, I don't, I can't see how they would be for this. I've worked, I mean, I've worked directly for them. They've paid me. Um, and the fact that you don't have any bio-retention whatsoever, I mean, the first thing they would tell you to put in is some sort of bio-retention. And there's, not only is there no bio-retention, there's no retention whatsoever, and say it's a Nature Conservancy thing is patently false.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1011.23][1011.23](APPLAUSE).
Is there any additional information to be brought for this board at this time? Mr. McKenzie, do you wish to, I'll give you a few brief moments, if you could touch on-
Yes, I'll just say, we've got a lot of technical, you know, responses to, you to bring back, and so we need to come back with some good technical background to, to respond to all the comments that were made. I appreciate them, I know you're the team, though, so we'll be back.
All right, thank you. Um, any discussion, so I, is there anything further in the public? I'll, sir, I'll close the public comment at this time. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I think there's been, if I can, I'd just real briefly, um, give a, this is obviously, a lot of people very passionate about this. Mr. Cohen, I applaud you for, for the vision. I think it's, I disagree with the statement that was made that there's nothing in Effingham to come see. I think, I think tourism is something that the county can grow, and I'm excited to see that. And I know it's extremely difficult to find a piece of property that, that meets those, those needs and meets the, the needs of your vision. It's just very challenging, and I applaud you all for being here, too. I mean, this, I know it's frustration, but this is the process. I mean, it's good that you're out and talking, so, um, I just, I'll give my opinion. I just don't think it's the piece of property for the vision.[1120.13][1120.13](APPLAUSE).
I mean, I concur, I mean, and Mr. Cohen, I mean, to you and your efforts on the creek, I mean, um, I can't get past the rooftops with the commercial aspect of it. I mean, it just seems like a lot. Um, I can't help but not agree that it seems like we're commercial, really commercializing what's supposed to be a natural area and a natural scenery for Ebenezer Creek. So, my thoughts as well. Any further discussion? I call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to deny.
Motion for denial, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor of denial?
No.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. When'd you say, Theresa?[1175.23][1175.23](APPLAUSE). Seven. So, this is a, I mean, this is a vetting process and a lot of questions and answers, which, but this still is a recommendation that moves to the county commissioners. So, it's a lot of information for everybody to take in tonight, so, but this will still be heard on June the seventh, is that correct?
June the seventh, at six o'clock.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Item number six, the public hearing for Three Birds Development LLC requests to rezon 39.46 acres from AR1 to R3 to allow for a multifamily residential development located on Nolsey Conaway Road, just the first district. Their representative for Three Birds Development?
My name is Michael Hussey. I'm with Sundown Land Surveying. I'm representing Matt Byrd, who could not, he was supposed to be here, but he had to go on a family emergency. And he asked me if I would come and present this forum, or at least ask any questions I could. And this development, I know that he's, I've worked a little with him on his development on just south of here, I guess it's right by the high school that they rezoned recently for an R3. And this is sort of mimicking that, those requirements. And I know he worked with, I think y'all changed some of those requirements for RS3 recently, if I'm not mistaken. And I think he was involved somewhat in that, working with staff on that. And he's, again, incorporated that into his potential site plan for this rezoning. And I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you, sir. Ms. Teresa, do you have anything you wish to add at this time?
Yes, this area, this area is zoned AR1 mostly. Here we go, this is the zoning map. This area is zoned AR1. The greens represent AR1 and AR2, which are the lower-density ag residential zoning districts. The blue and the purple are the higher-density, single-family residential subdivisions that are in that general area. In the lower right there, you'll see two parcels that are that magenta color. The lowest, the one at the very bottom, is the parcel that Mr. Hussey just referred to, that was recently rezoned for approximately 140 townhomes. The parcel on the north side of Highway 30 is actually owned by the church and is not developed. We know of no site plans, so really, that's not really in play as far as density goes at this time. The proposal is to rezone this AR1 parcel to R3, which is the county's multifamily zoning district, which permits up to nine units per acre. And that is the proposal we see in front of us. It's for townhome development with 355 townhomes in, with about 15% open space, which is what's required by the ordinance. This is a, this is a higher density than we see in this area, and I'll go back to the zoning again. And this led to some concern among staff. So we did look into a lot of the aspects of, the inputs for this, this development. The, Highway 30 is a state highway, so that's set. The general area is relatively, it's, it's growing in development. And what we did was look at address point, I'm gonna go back here. The green dots represent existing address points, so in the lower right, you'll see what represents Park West. It's a fairly high dense, high-density residential subdivision. And scattered around there are a variety of other subdivisions. And those green dots, as I said, represent address points that have been designated by the county. So those are approved lots. They're either built out or can be built out. When we looked at the, the overall density of addresses, which represent houses, in, in each square mile, which is, you know, each of those grids is a square mile, we see that the, the area where the proposed rezoning is located, that yellow in the kind of left-hand side, I'm just moving my cursor over it now. It's kind of a medium density. It's approximately, let me check this. This one is in the approximately, less than 200 units per acre, or per mile, per square mile density. When we added the proposed 350 units to the overall count here, we see that it's increased quite dramatically, that that square mile would increase to 550, the proposed total for that square mile would be about 551 units, which is starkly more dense than the surrounding area. So we were concerned about that. But another issue to be aware of is that the wastewater treatment capacity is at the point where we're, essentially, we're looking to increase our capacity. We're at the point where we're having to look very carefully at new development requests. And a recent rezoning, which I will show you on the map, that you saw about a, very recently, this parcel here is currently, was zoned R1 and recently rezoned, increased density to R6. At that, that was approved by the Board of Commissioners. And the capacity assurance letter that we provided could guarantee only 25 units in the next 18 months. So we're, we're, we're starting to see an end to the, we're starting to see, to see the need for limits of development as far as being able to assure capacity for future development. So all of these things coming together are giving us concern with this particular development, and staff are recommending denial at this time for this rezoning.
Thank you, Ms. Concanon. Do you have anything else you wish to bring at this time?
The only thing I would bring up is, you know, you mentioned the church parcel that is zoned R3, even though it's not, there are no development plans, it's still zoned R3. So it could, you know, have a net density of nine units per acre or so, you know, that, that would be included in that. Other than the fact that, I, I think that Matt and his, you know, some of his advisors are saying there is a need for this type of development in Effingham County, and he just is, is hap, you know, just looking forward to doing it if y'all would, you know, approve it for him.
Go ahead.
Any thoughts on the sewer points that staff raised and limitations for first phases?
You know, from, I don't, I don't know the rules in rezoning and concerning the sewer capacity. I know that's an issue, and is, I believe it's an issue that y'all are working to increase capacity, so, you know, that's just part of a site plan review process as opposed to a zoning, I think. But it may come into play as to how y'all rezone, to whether or not y'all will have the capacity when y'all increase it. I just don't know that much about what y'all are asking for and how much capacity y'all can have.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Hussey. We may have some questions for you in a moment. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Either in favor or against this request? Yes, sir.
Thank you for hearing me. John M., John M. Danielson, 401 Noel Conaway Road. First, I'm gonna ask you, since you're recommending denial, am I, am I wasting your time and everybody else's time by opposing? Should I save this for later?
Staff is recommending denial, and that's merely her recommendation. I mean, the board members.
Okay, I got you.
I'm gonna speak for the board members.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Well, I share 645 feet with this 39 acres. I built my house 27 years ago on land that's been in my family for almost 250 years, which should not give me any rights. It's just really, it's really important to me. I always knew this land would be developed, and I always knew that I would build a privacy fence. I never dreamed that it would be apartments. I never, never crossed my mind. I always knew there'd be a little more traffic right there. But that section between Zion Church and Conaway slash Zitrower Road is just a little over half a mile long. The idea of adding 700 cars ingress egress, I don't know how it could ever be possible. Just absolutely, just makes my head swim. I've got a lot of specific points, and I think I'm just going to, I think I'm just going to leave them alone and let others speak, other than my general feeling of not wanting apartments. I never dreamed there'd be apartments on the, the north, or the, I guess, west end of Highway 30. And my feel for this county is, it's a feeling of permanence. It's people, people are born here and so often stay here, or they move here and they love it and they stay here and they have children, and those kids stay here. Apartments are different. There are people who, who come and go. And it would, it would just not be my choice, and I certainly hope we continue to not approve. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel.
Hello. My name is Kimberly Tuttle. I do not live in that immediate area, but I do travel it at least twice a day. This property is right down the street from Marlow Elementary. And anybody that goes that way knows what a traffic nightmare that is. Parents are lined up on Highway 17 for traffic drop-off and traffic pickup for their children. You add 355 families, probably, what is that, 700 vehicles to that immediate area, the traffic is only going to raise exponentially, and it's gonna be a nightmare. So I really think it's a bad idea to put that much additional homeowner, or not even homeowners, renters in that area. It's gonna make the traffic even worse. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tuttle. Does anyone else wish to speak, either in favor or against?
Michael Maddox. I built a subdivision right by this proposed subdivision called Green Bridge Farm. An old family property, I'm this, this guy's uncle. It's been in our family since 1798. And he made some good points. This is not a transient county. People live here, that stay here. And you're not bringing in lawyers and doctors with these subdivisions that you're proposing. Now evidently, one of these, very similar, got proposed, it's right down the road. I don't know why I wasn't informed. But this guy, Byrd, he, he got a notice to proceed for another installation similar to this, townhouses on Zitrower. Did he get the notice to proceed on that?
No, sir, I don't.
Mr. Byrd has approval to build townhomes in, I'm just going to the, if you want to step back and see.
It's property, property next to the high school.
The lower right-hand corner. So I think-
What's that one on Zitrower?
That's a, that, that was zoned R1, single-family residential since the early 2000s.
Yeah, it's a single-family development.
Somebody said it was rent-only? Is that right? That's not right?
It was recently rezoned to R6, which is somewhat higher density of single-family residential.
Well, I could see the map from where I'm sitting. The large lot next to this is where I live. It's a mini farm.
Yes, sir.
So I built Green Bridge Farm on the sustainability concept. There's large lots, there's plenty of woods, and there's actually a farm right next to it. I'm the farmer, okay? When I heard about this, a friend of mine sent me a leak to this proposal, which I'll refer to as the abomination. I don't know, is this where we're going, in Effingham? You're putting townhouses in the middle of the woods? Right next to people that have lived there for centuries? I mean, is that where we're going? Is that what you guys want?
Well, we haven't voted yet, but I mean, he has American right to turn in his application and, and ask, to ask to do it.
Okay. Well, you, you can also tell them no.
We should, yeah.
Okay. And that's why I prefer you tell them. I mean, is, at what point does this become ridiculous? We were already there. Townhouses in the middle of the woods in Effingham County? I mean, I don't expect you to, when I finally got the notice to proceed on my project, there was a lady on the, on the board that said, "I think this is great. I hope other developers use you as a model." Well, we're going the opposite way now, aren't we? You know, it's not large lots with, you know, flora and fauna. I've got a pond, everybody can, you know, I've got community properties, an organic farm. And then I have townhouses next to me, 355 units, and like four or five people in each one of those units? That's like a little town. That's like probably more than, than Marlow. You know, maybe more than Guyton. So, I mean, is, is this where we're going? Is, is this what the people want, though? We don't want it. Are we being sold down the river to the highest bidder? Yeah, I'm looking right at you, and I'm telling you, I don't want this. And I don't think anybody in this room wants it. So you're gonna have to figure out whether or not you stand up for us, or you stand up for the big businesses that are buying us up. That's all I have to say.
Sir, we're here to listen.
Okay, well, all right.
Thank you.
I have a vested interest in it.
Well, and we, we do care, whether you believe that or not. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Hancock. I am, like a lot of people, moved to Effingham from Savannah, actually from Liberty County, and built a house a little further down Highway 30, back in 93. I have relatives who live in Pooler. I'll tell you something, do not turn Effingham into Pooler. All right? The traffic on Highway 30 now, I used to, could go to work, I work in Bluffton, I could hit Highway 30 at 7:15 and be at work at 8:00. I'm now having to hit Highway 30 at about 6:30 or 6:15. And there's still traffic coming off of the opposing roads. If this gets put in, you just might as well wave the, the green flag, it's Daytona. And I mean, I've had people pull it out in front of me now with this minimal traffic. I've had to hit my brakes two or three times, because they just, they, they sit there so long, they're, they're just anxious to get out. I see the traffic, I see the congestion, I see Pooler, and something nobody's mentioned, crime. Do not turn this into Pooler. Thank you. Thank you for talking.
Thank you, Mr. Hancock. Does anyone else wish to speak, present any new information?
Oh, my name's Ed Ringer. I live next to Mike Maddox, Green Bridge Lane, 200 Green Bridge Lane. Moved here in 2014. Purchased the lot, built my house along with my wife, designed it. Trees all around, and now the trees are gonna be gone. Noise, flooding possibilities. Where's the water gonna come from to keep this apartment complex going? I just don't see it. I'm totally against it, and don't want it to happen. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ringer. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak, provide any additional information? Is that it? All right, I'll close public comment, discussion from the board.
I think, you know, Teresa really pinpointed the problem, is, is the density is just so many people in a small area, and that development, this proposed development, doesn't fit that skew. I mean, we're gonna have too many cars on the road as it is already. So I would be against it.
I mean, for me, I mean, and they brought up the townhome development down the road. I mean, it was, if I remember correctly, 13, 14 acres, at the entrance of a subdivision, had some wetland buffers, next to a school. I think it was a little different. I, for, personally, for me, I don't think it's the reason that says just because it's down the road, we have to approve this one.
I think we denied that one here, and the commissioners approved it, too. The townhome part.
They, they went back and reworked the R6, or R3, excuse me, R3 ordinance, and changed it a lot.
Before we get a vote, I'll just say a few things. You know, I, I actually do believe that density is appropriate in appropriate areas. I recognize, in my opinion, not everybody can be a doctor or a lawyer, and there are gonna be people that move to our county that aren't doctors and lawyers, and we've got to figure out a way to provide housing. Housing is an issue in not just our area, in our country. With that said, the other R3s that I see up there, I actually, I wasn't on the board at that time, but the fact that they are that close and walkable to a school would, would have, make sense there. For this piece, where it is located, I can't make that same connection in my head from, from the density standpoint. And also, one other thing, I know it's not a requirement for rezoning, but an applicant always has the ability to provide us more information than what the application requires. And with something like this, I would want to see more related to traffic, and understand how the improvements would be made in front of the, on, on the road there, so with that, that's all I've got to say, but.
You make a motion?
Yes, with what I just said, I will make a motion for denial of the rezoning.
Have a motion to deny. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. All those in favor of denial? Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Once again, just like the previous, this is a recommendation to the board, June 7th. You don't have to be on the record, does he? For just a question?
Is there ever been a situation like this, when so many people are opposed to the, the area down by Effinies, obviously? A lot of people don't want it. Do you ever open up these kind of issues, big issues, to vote? A public vote, like a public, public referendum?
Not, not, not a rezoning.
So you, the commissioners are supposed to represent us, even if we don't want it, and they want it, they win?
So the commissioners are supposed to represent us, even if we don't want it and they want it, they win?
Yeah, essentially.
We're not really represented.
Well, you are represented, you might... Well, I mean, it's...I mean, it depends on whether you agree or not. I mean, you're represented, but they're also representing, what, 60-some thousand residents in Effingham County? And you see how many's here, so...
I brought 12 tax-paying families.
I mean, and we listen to you, sir, and we listen to you. Item 7 is a public hearing for Chesterfield LLC as agent for Genesis Z Bevel. TAL requests variance to reduce required buffers between industrial and various zone parcels located on Hardsville Roads on I-1. This is the second district.
Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse myself from this item and then through item 11.
You're recusing yourself, item 7 through 11?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Duly noted. You got that, Kenny?
Yep.
All right, is there representative here tonight from Chesterfield LLC? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you very much. My name is Chance Rand with Chesterfield LLC. We are the purchasers of the property. So the property was rezoned, I believe, in January of this year by the seller. We put a contract on the property for purchase after it was rezoned to industrial. We kept a...we held a meeting last Wednesday night with the residents in Jamestown, sent out a card, a flyer to the adjacent property owners. We held the meeting at the Development Authority's office last Wednesday night. We had four or five residents show up. We listened to their concerns and had very healthy discussions. Some of the issues that we heard were drainage concerns, wetland impacts, lights, noise, and truck parking on Effingham Parkway. So I'd like to, if I could, address a couple of those items now and then can open it up for questions. So with me tonight is Michael Roach with Thomason Hutton Engineering Company, along with Trey Wilkins with Thomason Hutton Engineering Company. And they have looked at the drainage. We've prepared a DEM, a digital elevation model, which, Ms. Teresa, I'm not sure if you have that. I know it was kind of a late added exhibit, but we've considered that. And some of the discussions that we had last Wednesday night around the drainage items, we tried to explain that we are required by county ordinance to maintain pre-development flows. Just like any development, whether it's industrial, commercial, or residential, we have to maintain the water shed, the water flows off the property after development to the pre-development flows. And that requirement is reviewed at the time of permit, submitting plans for permits. And so, you know, when we master plan these projects, you know, we master plan them with... you know, we know the rule of thumb for drainage requirements and how much percentage needs to be set aside for detention. And so we have done that in this plan. The second item of concern that we heard Wednesday night was wetland impacts. We do have a core-approved wetlands jurisdictional delineation. We have an application into the core now for a 404 permit. There's approximately 75 to 78 acres of wetlands on the site. We're proposing to impact less than 10% of that. And of course, we know that we have to obtain a 404 permit in order to do that. Lights, the light infusion was a concern. So one of the things that...one of the gentlemen that came Wednesday night and who lives right behind the 288,000 square foot building there, the smaller one on the right, you know, the current plan, as submitted, showed the truck court closer to the property line than the building. And so one of the things that we discussed Wednesday night is we would be willing, for that particular building, we would be willing to flip that building so that the building was closer to the property line and it would shield and protect the truck court. So it would shield the sound, it would shield the lights for the truck court. So we've made that concession to flip that building. The other concern that we heard was noise. Again, by flipping that building, it's gonna be that sound barrier, if you will, to keep that noise from traveling across over to the residential area. The...you know, unfortunately, we can't do anything about, you know, or forecast potential truck parking on Effingham Parkway. We can't control that. You know, so the application and the meeting, you know, we've come to you or at least submitted for a 75-foot buffer. And after we've met with the residents and I challenged Thomason Hutton to see if we can't do something other than, you know, flip the building to see if there was a way to provide a halfway or come-together point is one of the things that they were able to do was adjust the plan so that we can go from a 75-foot buffer to 150-foot buffer. So we've made that concession on our own. And we would propose, within that 150-foot buffer, we would propose the first 75 feet against the residential to stay undisturbed. I believe we have some aerials.
I don't know which one. You need to tell me which ones to put up.
Which? Show her the line of sight exhibit. So we have some aerials, some drone footage that shows the canopies and the vegetation within that 75-foot adjacent buffer. And then the area beyond that, the second 75 feet. So that first 75 feet is the denser vegetation, the hardwoods, along the little creek. And then, once you get beyond that first 75 feet, you are now in the planted pines. And so what we would also recommend and propose in addition to the 150-foot buffer is in the second 75 feet of that 150 feet is we will build a berm within that second 75 feet. So the proposal now is to increase from 75-foot buffer to 150-foot buffer, and then in the second 75, build a berm.
How big a berm?
I think it's a...within 75 feet, three-to-one slopes with a three-foot top, we're 12-ish, 12 to 15-foot high. And we would, you know, if we had to, we would plant the top of it. But I think you will see from the line of sight exhibits that the existing vegetation, the existing canopy within that first 75 feet, obviously is gonna be much taller than the berm. But what the berm also does is it helps alleviate the noise. And as we know, it carries that sound up and over. And that was...so that's proposed for the, what we call the north half, which is against Jamestown. On the southern half of the property, there is a larger estate, a larger tract of land that is adjacent to the existing tree farm. And so the...obviously, there is no buffer there against that gentleman's property where the tree farm is. So, you know, the buffer could be 1,000 feet, and it wouldn't matter because there's nothing there. So I think the intent, you know, of the buffers is to create that visual and that noise reduction. And so we think our new proposal of 150-foot buffer with a berm in that second 75 feet would provide both the visual and the sound attenuation.
Thank you, Mr. Rand.
Thank you.
Do you have anything you wish to add at this time, Ms. Teresa?
Yes, let me just get back to the PowerPoint.
That's exactly what we wanted.
So this is proposed...so this is four parcels, and let me... There are a total of four parcels that...and collectively, they form this shape here that's outlined in red. This portion up here was rezoned many years ago. And in fact, we saw it last year with a request for a variance for a...here. A variance for a buffer reduction on this border here. And that was approved because at the time, we thought, we only knew of the one warehouse. It was going to be accessing the Effingham Parkway along here. And these parcels were in the process of being rezoned to industrial, but there was no mention at the time of expansion into those tracks. So at the time, we thought, we only knew about this portion here needing to be the buffer reduction. The buffer, incidentally, for warehouses as a heavy industrial use is 300 feet. So, yeah, this parcel at the time was industrial. And then this one over here was in the process of rezoning to industrial. This is the future land use map, something we'd like to point out. It is designated as an ag area. The purple here, obviously, is the industrial zone land to the north of it. This is the zoning map. So this gives us perspective. Currently, this is all zoned industrial. This is residential, this is planned development residential, the green is ag residential. This is zone commercial for a proposed mini storage facility that has not yet started development. Because of the scope of the warehouse project, this did need to be submitted for regional review. It's a development of regional impact. So the Regional Commission did notify adjacent jurisdictions and did seek input. They received no input, but they did generate a report of findings. And we've included that with your packet. The project is not consistent with the regional future development map, and that shows the project site is rural. The county future land use map, as I pointed out, shows it as agricultural. So while we've had some issues in the, you know, in the past few years with our future land use map not necessarily working with the way the county is developing, this is simply what we have at this time, and it's a layer worth looking at. The proposed, as I mentioned, the required buffer between heavy industrial and AR and R zonings is 300 feet. At the time of the rezoning of this portion here, that's adjacent to Jamestown, we did point out, staff pointed out, that the parcel itself was quite narrow and, you know, would be good for really nothing more than the buffer. Although, obviously, the commissioners have always, and you all have always been, able to consider other proposals, just as we heard from Mr. Rain tonight, with a buffer or a berm. So that's an alternative that could be considered. The parcels themselves, I mean, what we have to consider in a variance is whether the parcels present some sort of topographical difficulties. And staff are contending that they, in fact, don't because, you know, there was a proposal last year for the single development, which met all the requirements except for the need for one small variance, which nobody had an issue with at the time. This current proposal, though, brings into play a much bigger impact on the adjacent residential development. So from a 300-foot proposed required buffer along this side, you know, we had an initial request for a reduction to 75 or 50 feet, although we've heard that they may be able to increase that somewhat. But I just want to point out that the required buffer is 300 feet between heavy industrial warehouse use and ag residential zoning districts. Over here, as this is already industrial, you know, their buffers are perfectly fine. 25-foot proposed is exactly what's needed, so no questions about that at all. Over here, there's a proposal to reduce this buffer to 25. No particular issue with that, although if the landowners from that side have something to say, then perhaps we'll hear that tonight. But the concern we have is that this residential use would be severely impacted by warehousing so close to it, but also with such a reduced buffer with the proposal that we reviewed of 75 feet. So we are recommending denial.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Teresa. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak, either in favor or against this request? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Thanks for hanging in there with us. It's been a long night already. My name is Mike Cheverry. I live in 140 Jamestown. My property is directly affected by the warehouse, the building that we were just speaking about. I moved to Effingham County about 10 years ago. I came up here, like a lot of people, for the quiet. I bought this house a few years ago. I lived just up the road on Colick for several years. And anyone that knows me, my wife will tell you, the reason we bought that property was for the wetlands protection that we were led to believe we had in the backyard, the privacy. We have a pool, we spent all of our spare time in the backyard. And I don't even...if I'd have known it was being rezoned in January, I would have came then. I never saw a notice. And the meeting notice that he referred to, that he had with the neighborhood, it came two days in advance, and I was out of town. So at the very least, I would like the buffer to stay at 300 feet. I personally don't understand how...I mean, you can talk about water flow and all that kind of stuff all you want, but you got half a million square feet of roof. There's no way, it doesn't impact the water flow. All that water, all that wetland that's in there, you have wooded marshland, and then you have riverine wetlands. Those are actually part of my property and several of my neighbors. So that all drains into my property, which will severely impact the water flow and also the wildlife. I mean, we've already...and the traffic, we've already got hit with this bypass that's going right by our neighborhood. There's gonna be a new roundabout right there. Traffic is already becoming a nightmare in that area. And you add all this truck traffic to that, we're never even gonna be able to get out of our neighborhood. And then the noise, I mean, you can put all the buffers you want. You have all this concrete and steel right next to a brand-new bypass with all that traffic and then all these trucks. There is no way that you buff that noise, there just isn't. The quarry that's already on the other side, way on the other side of that property, if I'm in my backyard during the day, I can hear them like they're in my driveway. And that's what, all the trees there? So for those and a whole host of other reasons, I'm sure a lot of my neighbors are gonna talk about, I strongly oppose this.
Thank you, Ms. Teresa. Anyone else?
Yes, sir. My name is Joseph Mock, and I do live on Hardsville Road. And I am right at the back of where this showing reduction to 50 feet proposed. And of course, I know Mr. Zipper. I've known him for quite a many years. And I didn't come to the rezoning meeting because I'm...you know, what he does with his property is his business. But, yeah, I can hear his concrete plant, his pipe plant, manufacturing plant through the woods. And he's got, what, two tracts of 77, 75, 77-acre tracts of planted pines? And that's not even a buffer from his concrete plant. So, yeah, I'm...you know, and now you're talking about bringing an industrial park adjacent to me. So yes, I am opposed to the reduction of the 50-foot buffer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Joe Burdick. I live at 144 Jamestown Drive. I've lived there since 2004. My wife and I moved to Effingham County because we heard the schools were better when our kids were infants and wanted to come out here from the south side of Savannah. All night tonight, we've been sitting in this other room, and I've been hearing everybody talk about tourism. I've been hearing people talk about expansion and growth. Savannah, they can keep the tourism. I don't want double-decker buses and... I don't want double-decker buses and trolleys running through Effingham County, I don't know if you do. And I hear people talking about warehouses, townhouses. I haven't heard anybody talk about another school. My kids, my two oldest, went to South Middle and Elementary. But with the rezoning, my daughter has to go to Bar- um, Blanford now. You know? I heard that on the news not too long ago that the, um, population has grown ten thousand or so in the last few years. Half of that's probably Melvin Glen. You know, and, and we're building these subdivisions and stuff. My backyard is literally... Where's Jamestown at on this picture?
Straight over your head.
My backyard is right there. I own about fifty to seventy-five feet, so I was told, into the woods from my open cleared area on my lot. Just beyond that is the creek that runs through, which would be protected by the Wetlands Act, which, again, we were all told that.
That's, that's right.
Every single one of my neighbors that lives across the street from me and beside me, all the way down the street, has been there for the fourteen, or for the nineteen years or so that I've been there. And that's one of the few things that I can say that any other neighborhood in the area has. But I can promise you, you put something like this in here, which I know it's going to, the people are gonna start to move. I've thought about it. I'm ready to get out, go somewhere else. And I hate to say it, but, you know, it's already bad enough as it is that people go to Poole or to spend their tax dollars because X, Y, Z. But moving to a different county altogether, which is something that I never thought I would even consider because of something like this, and like Mike said, and he lives two doors down from me. That concrete plant, with all the buffers that are there right now, you can hear them talking on a quiet day, like they were in your backyard. You know? So, again, if you're gonna build, it's unfortunate, but I understand progress is progress. But I would propose that we keep at least a three hundred feet variance, so that way we have some sort of buffer and some sort of privacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak? Yes, sir. You can go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Halligan, and we live at fourteen forty-five Hodgville Road. Fourteen forty-five Hodgville is right here. We own twelve acres. I believe it's two thousand seven hundred and forty-five linear feet adjacent to where they wanna stick a five hundred and twenty thousand square foot warehouse. Um, we moved pretty far. We moved from Pennsylvania to this property in December. Uh, my husband got a great job offer, and he said, "I got this crazy idea. Let's move to Georgia." And I said, "Well, who the hell moves to Georgia? No, but it's just a gateway to Florida where all the fun stuff is." But I said, "All right, I'll, I'll entertain the thought, let's go down to Georgia, let's meet, you know, your potential team. I wanna talk to a realtor, we'll see if we can find a place that we wanna be." And we found fourteen forty-five Hodgville Road, and I looked at him and I said, "If we can get this house, I will move to Georgia. I will move our three children to Georgia, we will relocate down the country." Um, at that time, I did not hear anything of Truitt's Tree Farm, which we are adjacent to, it's, it's currently a tree farm. Um, I didn't hear about them selling. Apparently, shortly after we moved in, they switched from, it was either agricultural or commercial to industrial. But we knew that there was that three hundred foot buffer, um, and so we didn't think it was going to impact us that badly. I was only made, made aware about four days ago that this warehouse was proposed. You can build a berm, sir, as high as you want, but you pretty much stood up here and said, "Our specific property is just out of luck, and that's not okay." One property owner just being out of luck is not okay. A tractor trailer is twelve feet high. This is a view from my daughter's bedroom with an RV sitting at our property line. That RV is twelve feet high. The exhaust from a tractor trailer sits at the top, it's twelve feet high. A twelve-foot berm is not going to reduce any sort of pollution coming onto our property. It's not going, going to reduce noise, it's not going to reduce light pollution. I'm asking the county commissioners to uphold the current three hundred foot buffer. They have twenty-six hundred acres to build this industrial hub. You can give us three hundred feet. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is, uh, Tom Searls, and I live across the street from Joe. And pretty much I echo everything that's already been said, and the concrete factory is, um, troublesome already. We don't need the additional traffic, um, and disturbance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Hello, my name is, uh, Cal Kessler. Sign in. Not gonna give you any sob stories or anything, tell you about how long I've lived in the county or probably really not re- relevant to where I live. But, uh, like the lady said before, we already have twenty-six hundred acres zoned for industrial, this is a gateway directly behind this property. I built a house in Effingham County, not Fort Wentworth, Georgia. I wanted to point out, I'm not one for throwing out the laws and all that stuff, but if you go back to that section three point four on the buffers, there's a specific line under this table where, first of all, this is a required ordinance for the county to protect the residents of the county. You just can't go changing the rules to, um, benefit somebody's financial gain. Says at no time may buffers be reduced between commercial, institutional, or industrial and recreational use. So, I'm kinda just wondering what's, what's the purpose of this meeting and why we're even discussing it.
Well, I mean, it's his God-given right to apply for a variance and ask for that rule to be changed.
It is, but, uh, I was at the December twentieth meeting also, when, when this was rezoned to the industrial track, and everybody at that time was already aware of the three hundred foot rule, so why wasn't it brought up then? Matter of fact, one of y'all mentioned that during that meeting. So, I was, I had full intentions on speaking at that meeting, but once that was said, there's no re- need, need for me to argue the point, right?
Yes, sir.
So, um, I wrote down several notes, uh, I think everybody's pretty much covered anything. I do wanna thank Chesterfield for holding the meeting the other day, that was very helpful information. Without that, I mean, we'd have come in this thing blind, just the letter that was sent out was really not any information on that. The only other concerns that I had, other than the truck traffic, the water encroachment, the noise, the beepers on the truck, and the trash flying around, uh, the, the property values and what it, how that's going to affect our properties. And that is all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kessler. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Charles Campbell, and I'm Lindsay's Halligan's grandfather, fourteen forty-five Hodgville Road. And, uh, you heard her story, uh, but basically, I just wanna elaborate that, uh, I walked from Lindsay's property line to three hundred feet. That's really not enough. The proposal to deal in seventy-five foot increments to attain a hundred and fifty foot reduction, uh, is clever, but I don't think it's, uh, at all appropriate. I think we should stick to the three hundred foot setbacks. Uh, there's also some other problems. If we move the setback closer, a pond in the back, now, there's ten ponds proposed on just one section of this industrial development, which shows you they're building on wetlands. There's one pond that's a prime moat around a million square foot building. Now, I don't know if this whole proposal is already through, but if we're dealing with setbacks, if you move the setback in, they're putting a pond at the back of our property adjacent to our pond that's already there. Now, that's contamination, I don't know what that can lead to. Uh, we may be aqua-forfed on that property, may not, but we do have rising and settling on the pond. That pond is four acres, and the pond they are proposing looks to be the same size or, or bigger. So, that was affected by the setbacks. That pond would be three hundred feet if the setback was, um, enforced and not changed. The next thing is the, uh, the line of sight. Whoever did this, these things, which we got a renegade copy of, nobody had copies, but we finally got one over the internet. From our property line to the, uh, parking lot would be one hundred and twenty-five feet, the way this, the proposal they're proposing. And progress is very important. We welcome the, reluctantly welcome the industrial park to, uh, to be our neighbor, but we'd like to have them come into the neighborhood, but not on the neighborhood. And what they're proposing now is, I hate to say greed, because I like to accuse anybody of anything. You already got your industrial park, stick to what it's supposed to be, be a good neighbor, and, uh, you know, don't try to take advantage of everybody else's, uh, quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rann. Does anyone have any additional information to bring?
Good evening, gentlemen, my name is Bruce Revelle, I live at one twenty-nine Jamestown Drive, uh, basically across the street from Joe and a couple neighbors, so all this proposed stuff will be coming at the front of my house. Most of, most of the things have been covered so far. I just, I believe that this re- reducement that they're requesting i- is unnecessary. I don't think it would be sufficient. I recently retired, that's where I'm gonna be living. I think the property values and the quality of life are gonna be affected just by having the three hundred foot buffer. The fact that the developer came in tonight and graciously offered only by late around half of the buffer really does impress me. I think that, uh, you gentlemen have a duty to enforce the law as it is now and the rules that we have in place. Thank you.
I'd like to, uh, in closing, uh, I guess, just, uh, offer some clarifications on, on what I heard this evening. We heard someone mention that we were going to impact the, uh, the wetlands adjacent to, um, the Jamestown, uh, property. Um, that, that statement is incorrect. Um, we are not proposing to impact any wetlands along the Jamestown or the, the southern residential property line. So, those wetlands will stay intact, uh, so we, we are not proposing to impact that whatsoever. So, that, again, that first seventy-five feet, or if the wetland is a hundred and fifty feet along that, along that property line, we're not proposing to impact that. Number two, drainage and trash and pollution and water quality, um, and I apologize, one thing I failed to mention earlier in my opening statement on the drainage, uh, that not only do we have to, by law, um, maintain the pre-development flow rate, but we also have to maintain water quality standards, uh, per the county ordinances. So, we are maintaining the flow rate and, uh, water quality standards, uh, hence the, uh, little bit larger, uh, pond system. Reference to the, the three hundred foot wide, uh, buffer, so the, the property, so as, as Ms. Teresa mentioned, this particular, uh, uh, buffer variance is for one of the properties, um, that we have under contract. That one property by itself is only about four hundred feet wide, um, at the, at the northern section. So, a, a three hundred foot buffer would, would actually render the pro- the property that was already rezoned industrial by the county as useless. And, and then the second...
I'm sorry, I'm, please.
And then the second, uh, parcel adjacent to that is, is, um, most of it is wetlands. So, the, the two parcels that were rezoned in January, again, um, so I, I say render it useless, but the alternative, uh, to warehousing is, I believe, um, per the ordinance, uh, it's zoned industrial, we can put, uh, chassis storage and trailer storage, uh, on this lot. So, with that case, we could keep the three hundred foot buffer, but, but park, you know, trucks and chassis, not do a berm, not do anything for the south parcel and the Christmas tree farm, so they would, they would have that visual to be able to see, uh, the, the chassis and, uh, and the container storage. Uh, I'd like to remind the board of the job creation that will be, uh, uh, available as a result of, um, of the development. As, as some of you know, we, um, we have developed the George International Trade Center, and within that park, uh, we have Lowe's Home Improvement as a tenant, we have Shaw Flooring as a tenant, we have Durrell Pacific Cycle, which makes, uh, mongoose bikes, Cannondale bikes. In fact, I think there was a recent announcement that, uh, in the county, that that actually is an assembly, uh, facility now. We have Panasonic in the other park, uh, so, uh, again, the tenants in our park are, are, you know, very, very well-known, you know, household names, and, and, uh, I believe we, in that park, we have created probably about six hundred jobs for the community. So, those jobs stay in the county, and, and folks don't have to travel outside the county. The, uh, and the last thing that I would, uh, I would like to close with is, um, is to remind you that, uh, I know we applied for a seventy-five foot buffer, um, a reduction seventy-five feet, but we have modified that proposal tonight to a hundred and fifty foot buffer with a berm in, uh, in the second seventy-five feet. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rann.
Uh, Jimmy Hellme, and I know all these people and probably shouldn't come up here tonight, but, uh, if you just had the engineers come up here and threaten the subdivision, if you don't give us the seventy-five or the hundred and fifty feet, we gonna park trailer chassis on your land, y'all need to take that in consideration about how people's thinking about the residents of this county. Thank you.
Is there any new information to be brought on this topic? Or I'll close.
My name's Brandy Thompson, I'm in the neighborhood of Summer Station Subdivision, and we are like a quarter of a mile down from, um, the tree farm. Um, we didn't even know the tree farm was being sold, um, and we didn't even know that was considered industrial. We don't even know how that happened without being notified, but my concern is the tra- We don't even know how that happened without being notified, but my concern is the traffic on Hodgville Road is so bad as it is, and if they want to put a warehouse there, that's gonna make things even that much more congested, and that's a concern for my community.
So the, the warehouse will only access the parkway for their, their traffic?
No.
According to the map, if you look at what's on the screen right now, they just kind of slid in an access road on the Hodgville that was not there.
That, that's just for, for the build, when they start construction or clearing or building? What, once the warehouses are constructed, isn't that correct, Ms., isn't that correct? Once all the container traffic and everything will come in on the parkway? It, it was a requirement?
During construction, there will be traffic along Hodgville?
There will be, until the parkway's done. Do you have anything further, Ms. Thompson?
Oh, yeah, my name's Barry Thompson. I think, I think we keep on touching on the same thing, is that I feel like the infrastructure of this complete in, in Effingham County is just not adequate enough for any of this type stuff. You keep on wanting to bring in more and more industry without the most adequate things from the start. Why are those things not being thought about in the first place, just like the gentleman said about the schools and stuff like that? That's what we need to be worried about, and then looking at bringing in these big companies. That's the issue right here. That's why you have so many people here, because that's not being thought about. I don't know how the zoning even went down the last time, but to, for this industry to come out here and zone, or that should never even passed. There shouldn't be an industry in the middle of, of the country when people are out here trying to enjoy the country. I'm from Memphis. I got, I definitely didn't want to go back to a Memphis run and gun type environment. I don't, I don't want it, I don't want it. I don't know, I guess if, if it's, if it's a done deal, that's what they're gonna do, but, you know, to anything to stop it, I'm for it. So I didn't move out away from it just to get right back in it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you have someone on Zoom who wants to speak?
Okay, we'll, we'll bring them in in just a moment. Go ahead, sir.
Just one quick point. I'm Craig Laterno. I live at 146 Jamestown. Joe is my neighbor, and we are.
It's okay.
Anyway, I'm up there. It is in my backyard. Everybody's made some great points. I won't take much of your time. I do want to point out that the company's been gracious, like they said, to offer us a little bit more space of our three hundred that we already have. They have a lot of concessions to make as far as water quality, and they mentioned that they, you know, they are required by law to do these things, but I still don't know why we should have to be required to give up any part of our three hundred buffer. That's, that's required, and needs to be kept. That's it.
All right, you can bring your Zoom call in.
I'm 1401 Summer Station Drive. I just asked that the Chesterfield LLC, I think was the name, and Thomason Hutton Team, make sure that they include the Summer Station Drive.
1401 Summer Station Drive. I just asked that the Chesterfield LLC, I think was the name, and Thomason Hutton Team, make sure that they include the Summer Station Drive.
Can you hear me?
I just asked that the Chesterfield LLC, I think was the name, and Thomason Hutton Team.
Hello, do you wish to speak on the Chesterfield rezoning or variance request?
Hello, do you wish to speak on the?
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me? Yes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Can anyone hear me?
Yes, it's, I'm having problems.
Sorry, okay. If, if they, if they pop up again, bring them in.
Yes.
Is there anything?
I'm having problems.
Very quickly.
One of those is, as you mentioned earlier, when you did the rezoning the first time, he knew the buffer was three hundred feet, the property's four hundred feet wide, which basically renders it useless, which means that they fully intended rezoning this entire time.
I don't, I don't think this gentleman was the one that did the rezoning. He, he just, he just came on the scene, I guess.
When they bought the property, knowing that, they, they obviously intended to, that this buffer was going to be shortened, or at least try. It seemed like they probably already had something worked out, but.
Sure.
Anyways, the other point is, if you look, I know my property and my neighbor's property, where my house sits, when it goes down into that wetland, it's slopes. So if you build a twelve foot berm, it's gonna be about the level of my pool. It does nothing.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone with any additional information? All right, I'm, I'm gonna close public comment. I mean, Teresa, just so we make sure what we're voting on correctly, so we're looking to reduce the twenty-five foot buffers next to the industrial?
No, as far as.
So we make sure what we're voting on correctly, so we're looking to.
The, the request is to, to reduce the buffers on the, no, as far as along the neighborhood, so on the south.
So that's the only variance request we're, we're looking at?
It, it also is going to require internal buffers be eliminated. Now, I'm assuming these parcels will be combined, so that becomes a moot point, and it's not something we're really concerned with internally. So if the four parcels are combined and then the development were to take place, the internal buffers, you know, they disappear, but the, the buffers that are under consideration tonight are along the south and east side, so from the, from the parkway down, and that's where, if I can get, I can't get back on. They were shown in the previous exhibit as being reduced to seventy-five feet and being reduced to fifty feet. Those are, those are, because that's industrial to agricultural residential, those, those are, according to the ordinance, supposed to be three hundred feet, the reduction is to seventy-five feet. Now, Mr. Rand did say that they would increase that, but the, what we're looking at tonight is a ver, is a, is a request to reduce the buffer requirement to either seventy-five feet or perhaps something larger than that.
Okay. So, I mean, but it, I guess where I'm confused is it says, you know, twenty-five foot buffer proposed. I mean, that's just what's been proposed.
That's, that's what they're proposing, and that's actually permitted. That, that's, that's good.
But I thought, because that's I won.
That, yeah, because it's I won. If you remember, in this exhibit here, the red, the, the required buffer's twenty-five feet.
Right.
And in fact, if they were to, you know, in the future, combine parcels here or work something out with adjacent property owners, you, you know, the, the twenty-five foot buffer between industrial is something that has become fluid depending on ownership. We've seen that on Old Augusta Road. These, these are the internal buffers I mentioned, so these are, at this time, four separate parcels. So there's one here, there's one here, there's one here, and then there's this one. I'm assuming that this is all going to be combined and, and developed, so the internal buffers, while they exist technically, aren't really something we're terribly concerned with, but along here, this is where, you know, a required three hundred foot buffer, you know, we would expect to be shown. It is, it is not shown, it is, it is requested to be reduced to seventy-five feet according to the application, although tonight we heard that perhaps that reduction was only to one hundred and fifty feet. We don't have that as part of the application. That's not something we've been able to look at or review before tonight.
Okay.
But these are the, these are the lines we're talking about along here.
All right. Just want to be clear, thank you. Any? Discussion, may I ask anything? I mean, I, I will say, this is probably not gonna be popular, but Mr. Rand has done a good job down at his development on 21, and me personally, I mean, I like, I would, I would prefer to live by this development than a single, a brand-new, single-family home development. Having said that, I was on here when we set the three hundred foot buffer, and since then, I've had industrial developers tell me that we lost our mind and the county's crazy, and then I've had homeowners and residents say it's not enough, so I guess we're somewhere close to being right, because the two sides, neither one can agree, so we're, we're, we're close in the middle. So, I mean, if it was my house, I wouldn't mind the, the warehouse development, but, but I too would want the three hundred foot. I'm sorry. I think it's adequate, so. Anybody else?
No. Call for a vote.
I'll call for a motion.
Make a motion that we deny the request for the variance and maintain the three hundred foot buffer.
I have a motion to deny. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, all's in favor. Motion cured by all. Once again, this is a recommendation to the commissioners. It will be heard again by the county commissioners on June the seventh. Thank you, Mr. Rand.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm gonna disengage it.
Hopefully we can clear the crowd out. Dan Philly.
This is the fifth district. Mr. Ryan Thompson is abstaining from, from this vote, and obviously, I mean, the next four items are all, are all pertaining to this, so obviously it will be separate votes, but, but we should, we should go ahead and talk about it all if possible.
Is there a representative for Thatcher Investments?
Good evening. My name is Chance Rand with Chesterfield LLC, and we are the purchasers of this property. So again, we've got a little bit of a change to the proposal since the application, so we're requesting to rezone, I believe it's four parcels, just two?
This is two parcels. We can't talk about anything that's not.
Okay. So rezone two parcels of land, which on this map consists of the area with the, with the pond, and then the area with the building on it. And we're also proposing for a reduction in buffers on this particular development as well. I would like to.
Can I?
Absolutely.
Can you show just a twenty-two acres parcel? That's what we're talking about here right now, right?
Yeah, it is this one here, 4778. This is the first parcel.
All right, thank you. Sorry, Mr. Rand.
Yep, absolutely. So 477-8 is where the pond is shown on this plan, and then dash nine, dash nine is where the building is shown. Since the application was made to rezone this to industrial, we have since been able to put under contract the, I know we can't speak about them technically here tonight, but we put, put under contract two parcels on Old Augusta Road, and we did that so that we could have direct access to Old Augusta. We understand that there were some concerns about accessing Abercorn Road, which the two properties that are before you tonight, they do have access to Abercorn Road, by right access, but again, trying to work with the community and, and address concerns where we can, we've, we've, we've put the two other properties under contract on Old Augusta so we can eliminate the traffic on Abercorn Road. What you see before you is a proposal for another warehouse, approximately eight hundred thousand square feet. The other thing that we have heard recently, as recently as this evening, is since this application was made, and, and I cannot verify this, but, but I believe if someone has access to MLS, we were told that, that there's two additional properties along Old Augusta Road that are for sale now and being advertised for industrial development. So, you know, Old Augusta Road, I, I've, I used to live in the county for about sixteen years, and I've lived in, I used to live in Colebrook Plantation off of Hodgville, and then I moved out to Clayo and lived in Clayo for, for probably eight years up in Clayo. And, you know, when I was here, the, the Old Augusta Road was always the, the truck route, the bypass. Immediately to our south, you'll see the clearing here, that's the SD's trucking, that was, that's already been approved and, and already constructed and in operation. Directly across the street from, from this development is, is the Becknell Development, which is also zoned industrial that accesses Old Augusta Road. So we believe that this application is in line with other recent rezonings and recent developments to industrial on Old Augusta.
All right, sir. Thank you, Mr. Rand.
Thank you.
Teresa, do you wish to say something at this time?
This project, due to this proposed size of the warehouse, is, was also considered a development of regional impact, and so it was submitted online to the Development of Regional Impact Review page hosted by the Department of Community Affairs. The Coastal Regional Commission coordinated a regional review, solicited comments, and wrote a report. Their, their findings on this project were that the, it was not consistent with the regional future development map, which showed the project site area as rural. Rural areas are not expected to urbanize or require urban services in the next twenty years. The county future land use map indicates the project site is undeveloped and agricultural, and agricultural areas include uses such as farming, livestock, timber harvesting, or recreation. Obviously, according to the, this is our current zoning layer here, so the red, as you see, is industrial. This parcel was rezoned to industrial late last year. This, this, this parcel was rezoned to industrial, this was, so these have all been rezoned to industrial in recent years. The objection that we have actually to this one is both the access to Abercorn Road, which is a recently repaved, county-maintained road, which also services Abercorn Landing, but also that the Savannah water, Savannah, City of Savannah water intake activities are here, and this is the, the water line runs through this area. So the proposed concept plan, the proposed site plan shows the City of Savannah water line running down here. This is a, a power line easement. This is the City of Savannah water line. There's some concern of the, the proximity there to this water line. We haven't had any feedback from the City of Savannah on this as yet, so, you know, nothing more to say about that at this time. The, the proposal, what we're talking about right now is the rezoning, so I won't go into the, the, the buffers, but due to the proposed access to Abercorn Road, due to the interior, I mean, this essentially is a landlocked parcel, so, you know, are we talking about just this one parcel, or are we, have we expanded into the, are we talking about both of them?
We're talking about both.
We're talking about both of them, okay. So, yeah, they're not landlocked, they're, they have small access to Abercorn Road, and as far as we know, based on the application materials we received up and, and have reviewed up until this time, this is the proposed access. So staff are recommending denial of the rezoning due to the inadequate road or transportation infrastructure to serve that parcel.
Thank you, Ms. Teresa. Is there anyone who wishes to speak, either in favor or against this request?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I live on Old Augusta up front. What about up?
What about us that still have them homes there? You're putting that right in our pond in my backyard.
Sir, could I get you to come to?
Hi, I'm Tim Whitfield, and I live on 1859 Old Augusta Road.
So you're directly in front of it?
In front of it.
All right, sir.
And you're going to put a pond in my backyard. What's that going to do to my well? We're not on city water out there. And Abicorne Road, as she said, will not support fire trucks and stuff. That is not a very wide road. You can go down through there to go to the boat dock. And if a boat and a truck and trailer are coming down through there with a boat, you can't get over. You have to get off to the side of the road. Well, now they've repaved it. If you tried to get off to the side of the road, you're going down into a mighty deep ditch. It will not support what they're asking for. It just won't. And I don't want to see that happen. Because if you look at the picture, there's still some of us, like everybody else has said, we moved out there to be in the country, to have the country life. There's no way that can happen now. I understand they're developing all around us. But you've got to remember, there's still some of us that live on this road with nice homes. And it's basically you're going to force us out of there. And I ask you not, not to rezone it and do that to us.
All right, sir. Thank you, Mr. Whitfield. Is there anyone else?
My name is Mrs. Whitfield, and I live at 1859 Old Augusta Road South Two. We've moved there about four years ago, and it was our forever home. We've had industry come across the street. We've had, we have had rezoning all around us. Now you're asking for us to be in the backyard where our kids play, our grandkids play. And they're also asking for a reduction on the buffer for the noise. We're going to have the noise in there. They have also, again, like my husband said, with this size of warehouse being brought in and them putting in a pond, it's going to affect our water, which it will affect our living. It's going to lower our property value. And, I mean, we ask, we ask that you do please deny this. Do not allow this to happen. You allow it to happen in the front of us and to the side of us. Please protect part of our property.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Whitfield.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Hello, my name's Tim Phillips. My wife and I, we live at 270 Abicorne Road. It's this parcel. Late here, it's a big pond. We understand this whole road's industrial. I mean, that's, that's obvious. One concern, a couple of concerns we, we do have with this, this proposed warehouse. As Ms. Teresa spoke, the access to that property here. Like you said, Abicorne Road's not built for 18-wheelers. That's obvious. I watched them paved. It took them a day and a half. That's pretty. Don't get me wrong. But it took them a day and a half to pave it. So if you add the big trucks, and we've seen big trucks down there when they built, when they built the seawall, it was a mess. 18-wheelers daily for six months. And now with the road paved, you're going to have a lot more traffic to the boat landing with hunters, fishers, fishermen, people that enjoy the river. So I'm very concerned about access to that property right there. Couple more issues we have. The buffer, my wife was up here about six months ago with a buffer that was on Abicorne Road for the warehouse. It was put over there on the north side. They was asking for 150, the board, which I felt was the right thing to do is adhere to the current regulation, which is 300. Just to be clear, that's our property. There's two tracks on our property. I guess they want to go to 100-foot buffer, is that correct?
We'll hear that next, but yes, sir.
Also, the back end of my property here, as we're stuck in between that, I would ask the board to adhere to the 300-foot buffer. Because right now, I can hear SD's in the morning. It's, I mean, it's obvious. So if you reduce the buffer now to warehouse, it's just going to get worse. Like I said, noise pollution, the same thing everybody else has been talking about, you know, dealing with these big warehouses. And I would ask the board not to adhere to any buffer less than 300 feet, a natural buffer. That's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak?
I think I actually have a question maybe instead of a statement. Since we have, again, a new development since the application's middle with, with the two properties that we've put under contract on Old Augusta Road, should we, should we push this to the next meeting so that we can properly advertise those two and put this, pull this together as a whole so that we can, I, I don't know what the term is, maybe rightfully have all of it go together to show the access and to have that as part of the.
You'll close that back door to Abicorne Road and go out on Augusta.
Right. I mean, we're still not showing. Are we showing it on that plan? I guess we are on that plan that was submitted. Yes, so we would, we would show this plan instead where there's no access to Abicorne and the access out to Old Augusta. Would that be?
I mean, you definitely, I mean, I'm not tending to your business, but you definitely need your, that's, that's your decision. I mean, Teresa, I mean.
I just want to point out, so, yeah, you can certainly withdraw and resubmit with new information. You're in the June Planning Board, June deadline for the July Planning Board and September Board of Commissioners. That, that would put you in that cycle, so it's about a two-month bump. We can't accept something now for the next planning board. We've already got that cycle going. We have advertising requirements. We have notification requirements.
Have we, have we submitted for the other two parcels already? But we just did not make the.
I don't know.
Have we submitted an application for the two parcels on Old Augusta?
We haven't submitted.
So you said the, the second of the commissioners' meeting is in September now?
If we get, if we, any applications we receive, any complete application we receive up until June, I don't know, 13th, I think, puts you on the July Planning Board and, wait, August. I'm sorry, August, Board of Commissioners.
August, okay.
Well, we all, we all know that this decision's going to be made at the commission level. So, I mean, I think you probably sense with the road access where this is headed, I mean, tonight. But he can go on to the commissioners and be tabled until such time as he gets his other parcel.
It's still the same. I mean, it's just, you're, you can, you can do whichever you choose. You can withdraw tonight. You can, you can take it to the commissioners and withdraw at that time bef.
Tables at, to, to the next month. Does he get heard next month?
No, 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 no. We, we have, I mean, we have advertising requirements. We have to meet.
These two months now.
Yeah, it's two months, so.
Did, do you, sir, you said you already owned two parcels on Old Augusta Road?
No, sir, we have two under, under contract.
You have it under contract, but you don't have no access off, at this point, off Old Augusta.
We, we do, well, with the two that we have under contract.
Under contract.
We would.
Yeah, we would.
So that, so we, tonight, I mean, what Mr. Rand's getting at is we can't, he can't legally provide us with a good access easement to Old Augusta Road.
Not tonight.
Not tonight. But he believes he can in the future.
He believes, but if he, if it doesn't work out, we're going back to Abicorne Road to access his property.
Well, I mean, he can, I mean, he can, he can present that application again for Old Augusta, I mean, for Abicorne Road, but that doesn't mean he's going to get approved.
But at this point, that's the only way onto your property.
Is, is Abicorne, that's correct.
Yes, sir.
And so, again, I'm sorry.
I mean, I'm not telling you what to do, but I, I would withdraw it and bring it all together.
I mean, I, I think.
And I'm sorry that it was wasted a lot of your time.
Of our other developments, but, but certainly the county does. And so, you know, we want to do the right thing. And so I think at this time, what we'll do is withdraw the current applications for these two properties. I believe it's both rezoning and a buffer variance. So would we?
Yeah, we, we, there are four applications, rezoning for each parcel, buffer variances for each parcel. So that's, if you wish to withdraw, you can do that.
So I would like to officially withdraw the four applications before you, the two for rezoning and the two for buffer variance, until such time we can come back with the other two properties and complete the development with access to Old Augusta.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Rand.
Thank you, Mr. Rand. Mr. Phillips, you, you had a question?
Just to be clear, we're, we're going to readjust, readdress the zoning at the next.
It will be the same process.
Same process.
So hopefully it won't be as long of a meeting.
Be up here another four and a half hours.
You better not be. I won't be here.
I just want to be clear. Yeah, that's one, yeah, that's one of the issues, is 300-foot buffer.
I mean, they, they can, they can file whatever application they want to. Doesn't mean the board's going to support it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll deal with it when it comes up.
When it comes back, right. It's going to be a new show, all right? Thank you.
That's right. And everybody will be informed. Sorry, sorry for y'all's time. Believe me, yes, ma'am.
Again, we live at 1859, and we were not notified of the other properties. We were not notified of the warehouse. We were only notified of the 22 acres.
We notify everyone within 200 feet of a subject property, and so we mail out those letters, and we really can't control.
So you got a notice on the 22 acres?
Yes.
But not on the back? Because it's, she's over.
It's more than 200 feet.
200 feet away.
Because it's more than 200 feet away?
Well, the back parcel was. That's the reason you didn't know about the back parcel, I guess.
But it connects to the 20, it's in conjunction with the 22. We should have been notified that they were putting in 800,000 square foot.
But you were, ma'am.
Warehouse. We were not notified of that until tonight. We were only notified of the 22 acres, which would fall under the 50 acres requirement.
Well, glad you showed up.
I'm glad I did too. Thank you.
All right, so items eight, nine, 10, and 11 have been, been withdrawn from Mr. Rand with Chesterfield. And he will resubmit two to three months, probably?
One more question. Are we going to be notified again?
Yeah, everybody, the same process will take place, correct, Teresa? Everybody will be re-notified?
Yes, once we, every, once we receive an application, we'll, assuming we receive one before the June deadline, it would be advertised, we would send out notification letters, and there would be signs. The signs are on Old Augusta Road because putting them on Abicorne didn't seem like it would be notifying very many people. But we did put the two signs out on Old Augusta Road and certainly fielded some phone calls about that. So I think, you know, now that you know, if you, if you want, call us anytime and we can keep you updated.
All right. Sorry for the inconvenience. Item number 12. Never thought we'd get here. Discussion and meeting date, consideration to cancel the scheduled June meeting. So I guess we're, consideration to move the June meeting date to June 27th, is that correct?
Yeah, let me explain it a little bit. So June, normally, our meetings are on the third Monday. That's June 20th. June 20th is a county holiday. So we've had to, the, the meeting on the, on the schedule is actually shown as June 13th. We have learned that it is tomorrow night on the Board of Commissioners' meeting agenda, they will consider canceling their July 5th meeting, which means that if we met on June 13th, people's cases that night wouldn't be heard till July 19th. We thought we, we would take advantage of that gap and push our meetings, give ourselves longer for review time, since there is going to be just a longer delay there. We don't know until tomorrow night, when they take the vote, whether or not they will cancel that meeting, because there was some debate whether they would. So what we're asking or notifying you of is that depending on tomorrow night's vote by the Board of Commissioners, if they cancel their July 5th meeting, we would like to push, we would like to cancel the June 13th Planning Board meeting, call a special meeting for June 27th. And that way, people aren't, there's not a huge gap in between Planning Board and Board of Commissioners for July. So there's no action. It's really more of a notification. We will put, we will let you know after tomorrow night's vote whether or not we're changing anything. So as, as it stands, we, we are, we expect a Board, a Planning Board meeting on June 13th. It may move to June 27th.
I am going to be in Missouri from the 9th to the 13th.
The 9th to the 13th? So you can make the 27th?
Yeah.
I can't make the 27th. I'd be out, I won't be here.
Are you serious?
I'll be in Key West.
Are you serious?
I swear.
Yeah, I've got a previous work thing that was committed to that. I got to be out of town, so.
I think I'm the 9th to the 12th.
I mean, um.
We don't have to move it. I mean, we can keep it on the 13th. We thought, since we found out they were possibly going to cancel it, we thought we could take advantage of the extra two weeks.
I completely understand.
This goes to the commissioners?
Yeah, tomorrow night, it's on their agenda to consider canceling their July 5th meeting.
I mean, it sounds to me like. I guess if we could find out if Allen could be here.
Peter said he can make the 13th.
I think I'm the 9th through the 12th in Branson.
Yeah, but we're, we're moving it to, probably to 27th is the one in question. Ryan can't be here. Bradley can't be here. That's a big loss.
That's a big loss. I don't know how y'all are going to operate without me.
I'd say we move it tentatively to the 27th and see, see if we can reach out to Allen, send him an email and find out if he'll be available.
We'll find out, we'll see what they vote tomorrow night. And Wednesday, we'll contact you, and we'll do a poll and find out which is the best night.
Can you guarantee our meeting won't last three hours and 45 minutes?
I cannot guarantee that.
Because this is ridiculous.
Are y'all trying to replace me and just not, won't you tell me?
This is insane. All right, give me a motion, please.
Make a motion that we move the June meeting to June 27th.
Thank you. Is there a second?
No, I'd rather you not vote. I'd, we were really more just notifying you, but.
They need to vote. Just let them vote. 20 is the holiday.
Don't know what's going on. June 19th is a holiday. Going to need a raise.
June 20th is the deserved holiday.
I make a motion that I remove my motion.
We had to make a motion.
They, they, June 20th is a, is a county holiday. We cannot have a meeting that day, so you have to move it one way or the other.
No, no, we've already moved it. We've already adopted the new schedule.
And now we're moving it to the 27th.
Move forward previously.
Right, we, we anticipated this. When you adopted the new schedule a few months ago.
Okay, so we don't have to make a motion?
I make a motion that Dave make a motion.
All right. Is there any further business for this board? Meeting adjourned.